Sherry, are you ready? Time is 7:14 PM. I'll call to order the City of Emeryville's Management of Emeryville Services Authority. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Pats?
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Here.
And Mayor Bowders?
Here. I'll take a motion to approve this agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Member Martinez and a second by Member Pats to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Ex parte communications, seeing none. Public comment for the consent calendar or items not on this agenda. Members of the public, we're going to run through two one-minute meetings here, so we'll be at the regular meeting in about two minutes. Is there any comment for this agenda item through the Management of Service -- Management Authority? No? I'll take a motion on the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Pats, second by Vice Mayor Medina to approve the consent calendar. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. There are no action items. The time is 7:15. That meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:15. I call to order the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, please note that all members are still present. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Martinez, second by Vice Mayor Medina to approve agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Ex parte communications, seeing none. Public comment for the consent agenda or items not on this agenda, seeing none. Consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Martinez, second by Member Donahue to approve the consent calendar. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. No action items. The time is 7:15. The meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:16. Madam Clerk, I call to order the City Council of the City of Emeryville. Madam Clerk, please note that all members are still present. I'll take a motion to approve this agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Pats, second by Vice Mayor Medina to approve agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Special orders of the day. Evening. Okay, so we have a couple of special orders of the day today. And the first one, I would like to ask and invite Ms. Joyce Jacobson to join me up here. And can I ask Councilmember Martinez to join me as well? And I'm going to ask, Councilmember Martinez is our council liaison to the Commission on Aging. I'm going to ask her to hold this while we do this. So it's been a privilege of mine to have lived in the city for a number of years now and had the privilege of knowing Joyce Jacobson for as many years as I've lived here. And so it's with a series of mixed emotions that we do this proclamation this evening because Joyce has served our community as a volunteer, as a leader, as an advocate for seniors for a very long time. And she has been a mentor to myself and I know other members of council along the way on issues of great importance to seniors, people living on fixed incomes and long-term residents in our community. And we're grateful to the volunteerism of all the people who serve on our commissions and committees, but we couldn't pass up the opportunity to recognize her today as she has stepped off from our Commission on Aging. So this is a proclamation recognizing Joyce Jacobson for 22 years of volunteer service to the City of Emeryville. Whereas Joyce Jacobson has served as a member of the Commission on Aging for 22 years from 1996 to 2018, and served as its chair from 2015 to 18. And whereas she also served as the Emeryville Representative of the Alameda County Commission on Aging from 1999 to 2004. And whereas Joyce served as the Emeryville Representative on the Alameda County Transportation Commission's Paratransit Advisory and Planning Committee, PAPCO, for 10 years from 2007 to 2017, and was pivotal in establishing the Eight to Go Program here in the City of Emeryville. And whereas she served as the Chair of the Emeryville Unified School District's Parcel Tax Committee during which she was active in securing the passage of Measure J, which provided funding for the construction of the Emeryville Center of Community Life, the ECL. And whereas Joyce was recognized in 2011 by California State Assembly Member Nancy Skinner in the 14th Assembly District as the Emeryville Woman of the Year for her service to the community. Now therefore be it resolved that as Mayor of the City of Emeryville and on behalf of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, I do hereby recognize Joyce Jacobson for her 22 years of volunteer service for the City of Emeryville. The City of Emeryville appreciates her contributions to the community and wishes her well in her future. Proclaimed on the 17th day of September 2018 at a regular meeting of the City Council by the Mayor of the City of Emeryville. Please join me.
This is, can you hear me? Yeah, okay. This is called going out in style. One of the great things for me about being a participant in Emeryville affairs and being a volunteer has been that I was able to be close to the growth of the city and the growth and changes, which have been enormous, as everyone knows. And so that's really been exciting. And I've been able to contribute to some of the big projects that Emeryville undertook. And I've also been able to join in the whirring. There were times that we had to do a lot of whirring and figure out how to keep going forward. And so that's just been a big privilege for me in my life. I wouldn't be able to do these things if I hadn't been appointed by the City Council. And so I want to thank the City Council members for appointing me. And not only appointing me, but reappointing me and then doing it again, you know, keeping it going over the years. Sometimes I got confused, but I always ended up getting appointed. So I particularly want to remember two former City Council members, Nora Davis and Ruth Atkins. And they were very, very instrumental in pushing me along and getting me involved in different things and seeing that I did get reappointed. It's been a great privilege to work with city staff. I work, have worked with the community services staff. And the person I've worked with the most closely has been Brad Helfenberger. And Brad is a wonderful man, and the city is very fortunate to have him. Kim Burrows, who chairs the, or runs the Senior Center, has been the main staff person for the Commission on Aging. And Kim does a remarkable job. And she's very encouraging, and she's very capable and gets things done. And then there's Pedro Jimenez, who is head of the whole, I never forget, I think it's a department, is that right? Yeah. And he's, you know, sees that we all get taken care of, and he sees that the wheels go around, particularly when it comes to things that involve money. I have really appreciated this part of my life. It's made my retirement years really interesting and has brought me to where I am right now, you know? And so I particularly want to thank Mayor Bowders for this event and tell him how much I appreciate him. Thank you.
Did you want to take a picture for her?
Oh, yeah.
Oh?
Yeah, we want a picture.
They got a picture, okay.
Can I say one thing?
Yeah, of course, absolutely.
So I just want to say, Joyce, I've had the pleasure of seeing you chair many meetings at this point, and no one, save for our mayor, runs a meeting like Joyce Jacobson. So, and I'm so glad to have been witness to your service to the community. And if any of you know Joyce, you know she loves a good jazz show, and that's where I think we'll be finding her, is at more of those events like Jazz in the Park. So thank you so much. Really appreciate everything that you've done for the city.
Thank you. Thanks, Diane. Diane is the City Council member who attends the Commission on Aging.
We have two other proclamations this evening, and I'm going to try and go through them quickly because I understand that we do not have recipients for them tonight. Okay, the first is proclaiming the month of September 2018 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the City of Emeryville. Whereas September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, which is intended to help promote awareness surrounding each of the suicide prevention resources available to us and our communities with the simple goal of learning how to help those around us and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas according to the Center for Disease Control, each year more than 41,000 people die by suicide. And whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death among adults in the United States and the 2nd leading cause of death among people ages 10 to 24. And whereas the City of Emeryville places its full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, coaches, law enforcement, and parents in their efforts to build a supportive community that makes itself available to all of its members. Whereas local organizations such as Suicide Prevention Services and national organizations such as the National Alliance on Mental Illness are at the front lines of a battle that many still refuse to discuss here in public, as suicide and mental illness remain taboo subjects for many. And whereas all residents are encouraged to take time to check in with their family, their friends, and neighbors over the next few days with a simple phone call, a message, a handshake, or a hug, any of which can go a long way toward helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Now therefore be it resolved that as Mayor of the City of Emeryville and on behalf of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, I hereby proclaim the month of September 2018 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the City of Emeryville and encourage everyone to demonstrate true appreciation for the friends and loved ones they have on a daily basis in whatever way feels best. Proclaim the 17th day of September 2018 at a regular City Council meeting by the Mayor of Emeryville. And our last one is California Clean Air Day. Proclaiming October 3, 2018, as California Clean Air Day in the City of Emeryville. Whereas air pollution contributes to higher rates of cancer and heart and lung diseases, which adversely affects human health. And whereas California has some of the most polluted regions in the United States. And whereas it is vital that we protect the health and well-being of our residents, visitors, and workforce. And whereas emissions from vehicles, industry, and even household sources significantly affect the natural environment, air quality, and health of the people of Emeryville. Whereas individual actions such as not idling vehicles, walking or biking to work and school, carpooling, and conserving energy can directly impact air quality here in our region. And whereas everyone can play a role in achieving this important improvement. And whereas education about air quality can raise community awareness, encourage our community to develop better habits, and improve community health. Now therefore be it resolved that as Mayor of the City of Emeryville and on behalf of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, I hereby proclaim October 3, 2018, as California Clean Air Day in the City of Emeryville and encourage all of our residents, businesses, employees, and community members to participate in Clean Air Day and help clear the air for all of California. Proclaim the 17th day of September 2018 at a regular City Council meeting by the Mayor of Emeryville. That concludes our special orders of the day. Onto Agenda Item 5, announcements of committee and commission vacancies. Madam Clerk.
Yes, we had a very robust recruitment to fill our unexpected vacancies, and you'll be making those appointments at your October 2 meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, special announcements or reports of meetings attended on? Councilmember Martinez?
I am a, serve as a member on Stop Waste, which is the Alameda County Waste Management Authority Recycling Board and Energy Council. And I just wanted to let anyone know, associated with any restaurant businesses in Emeryville, that they have room in their Rethink Disposable Technical Assistance Program. So this is where Stop Waste goes in and gives technical assistance to any restaurants that are looking to go from the disposable model to buying dishes and cups and spoons and forks and washing them in-house. So they're, they provide hands-on support and staff and can offer rebates for those who qualify towards the purchase of reusable food service ware. So in order to take advantage of that, you would just need to go to rethinkdisposable.org/businesses.
Thank you. Councilmember Donahue, do you have anything?
I'd like to announce an upcoming natural holiday, which is the solar equinox that's going to be happening on the 22nd. This is equal day, equal night over the entire planet. This is remarkable that we'll share this same reality with every other human on the entire planet. And I think that twice a year, this is worthy of celebrating. And I wish that our city had some way to effectively celebrate this absolute unifying event for our species.
Okay? Thank you. Councilmember Pats?
Mine's much more local. I attended the monthly, or semi-monthly Housing Authority, Alameda County Housing Authority HACA meeting. And we actually distributed the scholarships we awarded at our last meeting, so it was the best meeting I've attended. I'm always pleased to see people taking advantage of educational opportunities. And I, it's interesting to me, when I was a child, education was the biggest need, and we were seeing a transition in that. And that has transitioned now to being housing has just overtaken education. So it was incredible to be able to combine those two things and see people who are getting housing assistance from the Housing Authority. We had, we had recipients going to UC San Diego, Cal State East Bay, somebody going to Barbara College. And her speech in particular left me the, the, the most moved because she was able to very quickly articulate what the money would do for her, which was to upgrade her kit, allowing her to give a higher quality and haircut and get better clientele and so to have that immediate impact. We had another member who was improving his driver's license, and I know I'm going on longer than I should, but I found these so meaningful. You know, moving from a Class C to a Class A license just triples the amount of money you can make per hour and really would have a huge impact for his whole family. And so it was, it was really exciting to be a part of that and to see the great work they do. Also, the federal government is awful and it's cutting the budgets. So we can go back to that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Medina?
I attended the League of Cities Conference as Emeryville's voting delegate for Wednesday through Friday of last week. I represented our opposition to Resolutions 1 and 2. I managed to get recognized during Resolutions Committee for public debate. It's actually hard to get things debated at the League of Cities Conference, but I got a good hour and a half of debate going on it. We lost resoundingly, just, but I didn't get screamed at by 400 people this time, so progress was made. I also did learn some interesting things that in the South Bay region, also feeling frustrated with the fact that we are frequently, that their cities are also frequently in opposition to the League's general stances, they've committed a Legislative Affairs Committee. And I'm interested in learning more about that and talking to other progressive cities around the region about their interactions with this body.
Okay. Well, I want to actually use committee announcements to thank each of my colleagues for something different. So last Friday morning, I want to thank Councilmember Martinez for joining me at the back-to-school event at the ECL. And I want to thank Local 55 and Chief Yoder and the other folks from the Fire Department who put on the most successful back-to-school drive we've had since we started this in 2013 under the leadership of Captain Randall West. And School Board members Inch and Collins also joined Councilmember Martinez and I at the field. And we engaged in some music and some song, and kids got back-to-school supplies who needed them. So I want to thank you for participating in that. I want to thank Councilmember Donahue for joining me at the Shoreline Cleanup on Saturday morning. And contrary to the other event I just mentioned where we had the biggest and most, we actually, I believe, had the least amount of trash that we've ever collected. And that's actually a good thing. We had the same number of volunteers, but we had a markedly decreased number in amounts of trash that were collected at the normal spots, which is a positive sign. And so I've always gone to those events and I appreciated you being there, so I want to thank you for that. I want to thank Councilmember Pats for joining me at the Beer and Wine Festival, which was also fun, and it gave us a chance to support local businesses here on Bay Street. And that was Saturday afternoon, and hopefully that will become an annual event. And then although she was absent, we were in constant communication by phone while she was at the League of Cities Conference. And I just want to say that I haven't figured out what I will give you as a honorarium, but to go and, as someone who works with the League of Cities regularly, to poll, to a Resolutions Committee for Debate, an item that is popular with many cities but not some like ours, is a very difficult thing to do. And I appreciated you reaching out to me for some tips and guidance on that, but I wanted to just let the whole community know how well you represented us this past week at the League of Cities. So, and then in terms of future events, I just want to call out to hold on your calendar. September 29, we may have a grand opening of Christie Park. We're working on some final details, so hold on to that 3 to 5 PM. And there is an emergency preparedness event at the police and fire stations that morning from 11 till 2. Correct? 11 to 1? 11 to 1. And Vice Mayor Medina and I will be reading books on disaster preparedness to children that day. Okay, those are all the announcements. Sir, city managers report this evening?
No reports, sir.
Okay, thank you. And I wanted to actually take the opportunity to thank the city interim city manager. This will be Jim Holgerson's last meeting with us. Our new city manager begins next Monday, Christine Daniel. And you really know how to please a crowd. The neck, the neckwear is totally on point this evening. So I just wondered if you had anything you wanted to say at this point, that time now?
Yes, I think, definitely. Well, Mayor, and members of the council, I can't thank you enough for this opportunity to serve Emeryville. It's been a delight, a joy, both personally and professionally for myself to serve this great community, as you know, which is so diverse, to work for a council that has vision. And these days and times in politics, that's not necessarily always the case. That shows leadership, that's continuing to move the city forward, more, most importantly, cares about the community. As someone who's been in public service of 45 years, that is so important to success. And then the dedicated, talented staff that serve you, the city council, that serve, that will serve Christine when she comes in as city manager. They're an amazing staff that gets lots of good work done and certainly ready for the challenges that you'll set in front of them as Emeryville moves forward. So the simplest thing that I can say really is thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, staff, for the great work, and thank you, community, for this opportunity to serve Emeryville. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim, for all your work here. Ex parte communications by members for items on this agenda. I'll start with Member Pats.
None.
Member Medina?
I received communications, I think they're, they've all been entered into the public record for item 12.1.
Member Martinez?
Just the, just the same emails on item 12.1.
Member Donahue?
I've spoken with Archana Horstein, a community member, and one of the consultants for the Art Center, and also to Mr. David Dahl about the Art Center. We met about that.
And for item 12.1 related to the Art Center, I have received the same communications, most of which I think we've put into the public record. And I had a meeting with David from Orton Development as well. Okay. This time we'll entertain public comment for the consent agenda or items not on this agenda. So there will be public comment for each agenda item, but this is for items on the consent or not on the agenda. Any members of the public wish to speak now? And I know there is one speaker wishing to speak about Measure FF. And it is at the end of the evening, so if you would like, if you think you would like to leave in the next three hours, you might want to speak now. You can come to the podium and speak now. Just give you that chance because I heard you might, you might need to go. Is that true?
Thank you, yes. My name's Deborah Auker. I'm here tonight representing the East Bay Regional Park District. And so I think most of you know that we are a park district that covers both Alameda County and Contra Costa County. We have 73 parks throughout that, our jurisdiction. We have 121,000 acres of open space parklands that are available to your constituents and all the employees and business owners here in Emeryville, and 1,200 trail, miles of trails. So we are here to serve you and your public. And we do have a measure on November ballot, and we thank you for your support. Later on your agenda tonight, under legislative actions, you are recommending support for Measure FF. Measure FF is an extension of our current measure, so it doesn't increase any taxes. It's called Wildfire Protection, Safe Parks and Trails, Public Access, and Natural Habitat. It's just $12 annually to the residents of the, of the different agencies within the zone. It's not including all of our jurisdiction, it's just the western part of our district, so from the hills down to the shoreline. And so within the Emeryville area, of course, we're covering McLaughlin East Shore State Park, which the Park District manages and runs. We have a big project out there called the Brickyard, where we're doing a big restoration project, creating new trails there. Also, I'm not sure if you're aware that Gateway Regional Shoreline is in process. That's a new park that will be created at the foot of the Bay Bridge, just south, on the south side. And we're working with the federal government to take over that area. We've already taken over the Bridg yard building and are using, utilizing that for different constituent needs. But anyways, this funding will help to support all of these parks that have been around, from Tilden up in the hills, all the way to Richmond, down to Crab Cove at Crown Memorial Beach. So we appreciate your support in that area. As I mentioned, it's only $12 per month. It's actually lower, only 70, 70 cents a month. It's $12 a year or 70 cents a month for multifamily units, so it's a little bit lower for the majority of your constituents. And as I mentioned, we're doing wildfire protection, restoration projects, a lot of green transportation. You know, we also are managing the San Francisco Bay Trail. You have a lot of green transportation in this city, which we appreciate. And we're happy to be supported by the Sierra Club, the Audubon Society, and Save the Redwoods League. So again, we just thank you for your support.
Thank you, Deborah. And although it's an agenda item later, I'll just give council members, since you're here, a chance to ask if there's any questions about Measure FF.
Right.
Thank you, Deborah.
Appreciate it.
Any other public comment for the consent calendar or items not on this agenda? Seeing none, we're on the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion unless members wish to pull anything.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second by Councilmember Martinez to approve the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Don, Bowders?
Aye. Public hearings. Item 11.1 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, amending the City of Emeryville Master Fee Schedule for Fiscal Year 2018-19. Council, if it pleases you, I'd like to waive presentation.
That's fine.
That's fine.
It's fine. Presentation has been waived. This is a public hearing, Madam Clerk. For the benefit of the public, we are... For the benefit of the public, we are amending essentially two small sections in the master fee schedule to increase one fee on proposed development from 127 to 131 on the permit annually. And of course, I would do that. What's the second one?
Same increase.
The school fees. The Emery Unified School District increased their development fee, and our record will reflect that accordingly. It's a public hearing. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:43. The public hearing is open. Any members of the public who wish to speak on this master fee schedule have three minutes to do so. Please appear now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, the time is 7:43. The public hearing is closed. Members, do you wish to discuss? I'll entertain a motion.
Move the resolution.
Seconded.
There's a motion by member Martinez and a second by member Pats to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye, the resolution is approved. Action items. Item 12.1 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville authorizing the city manager to enter into negotiations for an exclusive right to negotiate agreement with Orton Development for the operation of an art center at 4060 Hollis Street. Okay, so for this presentation, Emmy, before you begin, if I may, we're going to have a presentation overview by staff. I understand that all three of the applicants are here this evening. Is that still correct? Yes? Do you see them all, Emmy? Yes? Okay. So for the benefit of the public, as to how we will run the presentation on this portion of the meeting, staff will do a presentation. We will begin with CAST. We will follow with, I forget the acronym for the second one. How do you? M?
MRS?
MSL, thank you. I was going to say MRS, but that's a different type of degree. MSL. And we will follow up with Orton Development at the end. Each applicant, as a group, will have 12 minutes to present. From the time I start the clock, that includes your setup, if you wish to set anything up. You can have as many speakers as you wish in your 12 minutes, but at the time, we'll put the clock up here so you can see it, so you don't have to keep checking on it. But when 12 minutes is up, the presentation will conclude at that time. The members of the teams will not be speaking at public comment. The presentation time is your time to present. You've presented to the city staff and to a panel already, so you have practiced working on this. And then the public comment will follow all three presentations, and members of the public not affiliated with an applicant will be afforded the opportunity to speak at that time. Okay?
Good evening, Mayor Bowders and members of council. While staff is very pleased to bring to you three proposals, they're conceptual proposals that are part of Phase Two of our RFQP for search of a private partner to help us both construct and operate the art center for the City of Emeryville. While staff is pleased, we know we put you in an unenviable position of having to choose among three proposals that each have unique and interesting aspects to them. Just to refresh, won't go over a long history of the project, but essentially, we've had this on the books for some time now, better part of a decade. And for reasons related to dissolution of redevelopment and construction costs, the prior capital project was tabled for some time. And so we're pleased to bring it back, or to bring the art center concept back. And council, as you know, had an art center study session in January to try to reinvigorate the process. Prior to doing that council study session, however, staff did a quick review of other art centers in the region to see how they were constructed, but more importantly, how they continued to operate. And we discovered that many of the art centers that had formerly been run by the cities had been converted to private practice because the city just could not afford the ongoing subsidy of operating an art center. The City of Richmond, which is an art center that many admired in developing the previous art center proposal, has a unique situation in that because they are a city that is, has grants that they can receive because of their status as a community with some challenges, that they're able to get funds that many other cities aren't able to. But they still have to go after those funds every year, and so it's an ongoing issue. Consequently, when council was looking at different options during that art center study session in January, they looked at the previous model of operations of having a nonprofit entity run it. They looked at the art center as a city-run facility, and they came to the conclusion that really, they wanted to do a private public partnership in your agreement with the public at that time. I just want to go over quickly the process to date. So we had that art center study session. As a result of that study session, staff released an RFQP that council reviewed. And the first step in that RFQP was a mandatory pre-submit meeting. Anyone that wanted to attend or be involved in a proposal for the art center had to have at least one member of their team attend this mandatory pre-submit meeting. And I have to say, it was super exciting. We were expecting somewhere between seven to nine people to come to the pre-submitting based on the RSVPs we had received before then. We had 50 people show up. We had people lining out the front door. And so there's obviously an interest, not just in our immediate community, but in the region, in having an art center here. And then once that pre-submitting meeting happened, they were to come forward, they were to create initial partnerships with developers, art center administrators, architects, construction managers, et cetera, and bring those initial proposals to a Phase One qualification round. During that qualifications round, we were very pleased to determine that there were three teams that were very qualified, both on their initial experience, or I should say their initial proposals, showing their qualifications related to their related projects that they had done, and also their financial backing. And so those three teams are all the ones that came and resubmitted or qualified to submit for Phase Two. And what Phase Two was, essentially, they were supposed to bring forward a proposal that analyzed the prior project to say, hey, this is a viable project still, this is how we can do it financially or structurally, operationally, or it's not, and this is why. And then if, whatever they said regarding that project, they were then to suggest a conceptual revised project proposal. And so what had happened at that point, they were then reviewed by two interview panels, and I'll get a little more into that later. So the current step, as I mentioned, is for you to select a private partner. Information has been ongoing, published to the art center page. We've had a webpage on the city's website dedicated to this project. And at key points, whether it was the mandatory pre-submitting meeting, or the Phase One release, or Phase Two release of information, it was updated to make sure that the public was aware what was going on with the project. Something that's important that was established in the RFQP was specific goals that the city council worked with the public to determine what they wanted to get out of these proposals moving forward. And those included objectives and key elements. And those include minimizing the city subsidy, both for the construction project but for ongoing for operations, maximizing civic and community arts-based uses, expediting completion of the project. We have this wonderful, amazing Emeryville Celebration of the Arts that people know region-wide, people even know out-of-state about Emeryville Celebration of the Arts, especially now that we're a cultural district, I just like to say. And so to be able to have a place for these folks as soon as possible is one of the main things that was identified in the RFQP as a key objective. And then, of course, utilizing robust community engagement in both developing programming for the facility. So not just the initial programming, but ongoing. And then some key elements to the physical structure would be dedicated space, again, for ECA or Emeryville Celebration of the Arts, dedicated and managed gallery space for artists, flexible use space suitable for performing arts and other community events, and then innovative architecture. As I said, there were three teams that were moved into the qualification round, and each of those teams chose to submit a proposal. Those includes CAST and CREW, and they will introduce themselves later. They have chosen, rather than a PowerPoint, to bring a physical model and some boards, I believe. And then MSL has also submitted a PowerPoint presentation, as has Orton Development. Orton Development, by the way, in your notes, is also noted as ODI, Orton Development Incorporated. Mentioned this briefly, there were a whole series of criteria that they were supposed to meet when they submitted for Phase Two. And two of the essential components of that was reviewing that prior capital project and then making an alternate project conceptual proposal. I use the word conceptual here carefully because this is a conceptual plan. The performance and any financial analysis that was done by staff were conceptual. And so it's likely that some aspect of any proposal that you'll look at tonight, after we've gone through the exclusive right to negotiate process and the planning process for design review, use permits, et cetera, if they're necessary, that the ultimate final version of the design and uses identifying that sort of thing will be somewhat different than from what you have seen tonight. So what staff is going to do at this point, in being mindful that each team has indicated that they want to do a presentation and has been given the opportunity to present, we are just going to do a fly-by summary of each proposal, which is some distinct aspects of each proposal. We're leaving it to the teams to really point out what they feel is the most important thing for the council to be aware of, about why their proposal, in their opinion, is the strongest proposal. Saying this again in alphabetical order to not indicate a preference, the first review I'd like to go over is the proposal by CAST and CREW. The lead partner is Community Arts Stabilization Trust. Again, we want to make sure the community is aware that they did take a careful look at the prior capital project. And so in looking at the prior capital project, this team identified some considerations that they thought were issues with that project. And those included the fact that the gallery space, which is a large space that would be needed for the ECA event, only had about 2,500 square feet, where really, they need at least 10,000 square feet. Large areas were dedicated to the lobby and other common areas, rather than arts programming, classroom and community use. Redundant locations for restroom facilities, there were five different locations, and they felt that that wasn't, and I should give the caveat, this is staff's summary of what was in the materials. It's not staff's opinion, and it's not necessarily exhaustive about what they described about the project. There was no loading or receiving area for art exhibit deliveries, was one of their items. And then they estimated a funding gap of over $6 million for the capital project alone. This is a conceptual site plan for their proposal. As you can see, they actually, along with other members of the shortlisted teams that submitted with Phase Two, did not utilize or suggest utilizing the city's parking lot, which is one of the options they could have done. They could have had first-story parking, for example, and then built above. Each chose to use the central main footprint of the existing building at 4060 Hollis. And then this proposal has an orientation to both Hollis Street and then, of course, Fortieth Street. I will let the applicant or candidate describe in detail the floor plan, but I can tell you that it includes, in addition to some of the performing arts or arts-related uses, such as performing arts, a gallery, et cetera, affordable housing component dedicated to artist housing. The artist housing would be consisting of a small, essentially studio units, although they can expand upon that, with a separation between the workspace and the living space. And then this is an artist's rendering of what it could look like in the evening facing Hollis Street. The second proposal I'll go over quickly is MSL and Company. Their prior capital project summary provided here basically says that the project was not financially sustainable for operations and additional debt required to do the capital project. The design would have entailed extensive structural, civil, and environmental upgrades. Operations model would have required ongoing public subsidies. Retention of the existing box-shaped, not best architectural approach, in their opinion, for the urban edge of town. And then the design scheme did not include sustainability components. This is an overview of their site plan, which includes quite a bit of landscaping, including a sculpture garden, interior garden, and then landscaping at the street. The floor plan, I'll just touch upon a couple of things that stood out for staff, and that was a co-working area. They also had, it's my understanding, the large gallery space and performing arts They also had a unique sawtooth, I believe that's the term? Architecture. And so we're showing that both from the outside at, or the exterior elevation at Hollis, and then this would be an example of what it would look like inside the gallery space. The next proposal is Orton Development. Their prior capital project analysis summary basically says that previous design added unnecessary expense to the roof extension with no added bonus of additional floor area associated with that expense. It noted that there was extensive glass storefront additions at Hollis, also resulting in unwarranted expense, that the large common areas, and oversized theater reduced floor area available for more higher revenue generating uses, and that the ongoing public city, et cetera, subsidies would be required for both constructions and operations. Their estimated funding gap in today's dollars, I'm assuming, would be $9.5 million for that existing, or that prior, capital project. This is their first floor, their main floor plan, and its approach includes a gallery space, a large gallery space, a performing arts space that if, when I show you the interior elevation later, it shows that it's somewhat dual-use, could be more than just performing arts, it could be for lectures, et cetera. The artist's studio space is shared studio space that can also be used for classes. This shows some examples of movable partitions in the interior with, on my left, the, you can see a peek through to the theater kind of flexible space. This is an elevation, hand-drawn elevation of the exterior full-length at Hollis Street. One of the interesting features is you'll notice at the Fortieth Street intersection, there's a glass enclosure that brings some visual interest at that corner. And then this would be the entrance at Hollis. So this Phase Two process had multiple steps. We were trying to be as transparent as possible and as inclusive with the community as possible, much more than typical capital improvement project, in that it's such an important project for the community that we've gone a couple steps further in this process. That included requiring each proposer to go to a community listening session. And this involved getting input from the public with their initial comments about design and use suggestions to those partner candidates and asking them to incorporate into their proposals. The Phase Two submittals, then again, as I mentioned, included the prior capital project analysis and then the revised capital proposal. And then analysis of the conceptual proposals were then, with their financial information and draft performance delegated, because the in-depth analysis needed at that time, to two interview panels by council. Those two interview panels included the community, or Blue Ribbon Art Center interview panel, as we like to call it. They were made up of experts from various fields. Mayor Bowders acted as meeting facilitator, but he was not voting member, and therefore there would be no conflict in the future for him to... there would be no conflict in the future for him to participate. The scope of review for the community panel was somewhat different from staff's scope of review, that's why you'll see somewhat different approach to the scoring. Their focus was on facility design and uses or arts programming. And that was intentional, both because we wanted to have a feeling for what the community wanted to see in facility design and uses, and also because of the in-depth analysis needed for the technical reviews about process and financial performers, which were also confidential information, that was needed to be performed by the staff panel. Staff panel, therefore, was made up of technical staff, and it was also, had a scope of review of basically all the criteria set forth in the RFQP. I won't go through all of these again, but just a reminder that each panel looked at all of the requirements of the objectives and the key elements as they were going through the proposals. They held interviews for each of the teams, both staff and the community panel. There were comprehensive scores that, of all the scores together, and staff and the community panel had similar scores but slightly different. In this particular slide, you can see the community panel's scores are in that blue color and staff's are in the green color. If you look at Cast's score and ODI or Orton Development's score for the Blue Ribbon Panel, they look pretty much alike, and that's because they are. It was 620 points to 621 points. So it was quite close for the community panel between those two top-rated teams. Staff, in looking at the more detailed technical considerations of process, of permitting requirements of additional city staffing that might be required to process a proposal, et cetera, gave a slight edge to Orton Development. However, all of the teams are qualified and able to construct an art center and have financial backing. It's a matter of the different criteria and which ones are the most important to the public and to the city council moving forward. Toward that end, we thought, because this is a difficult decision, we did a couple things. One is that in your attachments, you'll see that staff did an additional in-depth review of permitting and how long or how many processes would be required for each type of proposal because they're really essentially not similar in scope and length of time for each proposal. And so what we did, we looked at that, but one of the other things we did is we looked at the scores, just to make sure we're being objective, to look at the different criteria that were set forth by council as part of the RFQP, and how the scores played for each of those objectives, and how the community panel versus how staff panel voted based on specific objectives. And with regard to those, looking at the two top-scoring teams, just because those ones were the ones that came up highest for each of the panels, the staff panel determined that they felt that the, or determined based on their technical analysis, I should say, that Orton Development's proposal provided the minimum city subsidy to get the project going and constructed and moving forward. And there was not a vote by the community panel for this because that was not in the scope of their review, because it would take much more time, and again, it was confidential information. The second objective of maximizing civic community arts-based uses of the facility, the Blue Ribbon Panel indicated they preferred slightly the Cast proposal because it did include the artist housing component. And staff vote or indicated that they really had Orton and Cast tied on this item. And so consequently, the average would have been, give Cast a slight edge. With regard to expediting completion of the project, the Blue Ribbon Panel indicated, you know, strict interpretation of the scores indicated they felt it was a tie. Staff determined, based on what they knew of technical processes and permitting and funding, that Orton was the clear choice in getting the project done efficiently and quickly. And then a composite review of the key elements was decided by the Blue Ribbon Panel to be in favor of Cast, by staff, Orton, and then if you took an average, again, a tie. And then with regard to RFQP compliance and the general concept of, do they understand the project? We want to get this constructed, we want to get it done efficiently and quickly, we want to have an ongoing, keep the doors open, limited, if any, city continued financial input to the operating expenses. Both teams or both interview panels indicated that Orton Development was the preferred Briefly, to let you know where we are now with moving forward, the current step is council selection of the private partner. The next step would be going into an exclusive right-to-negotiate this, where the financial terms of both the capital and operating budgets would be determined and other aspects of the project. We then go into a lease disposition and development agreement. This would be developed following the term sheet that was established during that ERN period. Depending on the scope of the project, for example, or is one project much larger in scope physically and financially than the other, that would involve more time in developing the financing for the project, so that would be an additional phase. And then permitting. Basic planning processes includes public process for design review and any other permits that might be necessary, such as use permits, general plan amendments, et cetera, and then building and other agency permits. At this time, as the mayor mentioned previously, we'll be having a private partner candidate presentations, public comment, we'd like to ask that be invited. And then staff's recommendation is that council authorize the city manager to enter in negotiations for an exclusive right-to-negotiate agreement with Orton Development for the development operation of an art center on the city-owned property at 46th Hollis. Now, this proposal or proposed recommendation is based on staff's technical review of the scoring. However, you could take an alternate action, and that is to amend the resolution to authorize the ERN with a different candidate. And this concludes staff's report. Do you have any initial questions to staff at this time?
Unless it's a process question, I'd like to wait. No, thank you.
So I'd like to point out that each team has, or remind them, they've been asked to both set up and take down their materials within the 12-minute period. And I'd also like to point out to MSL that your PowerPoint is up here, and you'll be responsible for double-clicking and opening it yourself. And then Orton Development, same thing, yours is up here on the screen.
I'd like to just keep you close at hand in the audience, in the event that when we get to the end of something and we have technological issues, you're available.
Okay.
Sherri, could you come over here and just show me how to work the clock real briefly?
Let's just start.
And then when it's ready to reset, what do I have to just push?
I'll come over.
You'll come over? Okay. Okay, so I'm going to invite Cast and Crew, I'm going to start your clock, you may begin.
Hello.
Evening.
Good, there it is, my clock, thank you. My name is Steve Oliver, I'm the CEO of Oliver and Company, we're a general contractor and project manager. This is our 72nd year in business. About 25 years ago, we gave, I give half the company, the employees provide, they commit to half our work every year for nonprofit organizations, reduce fee, and that's what we've done. One block in Berkeley, I think we built everything, Berkeley Theatre, Aurora Theatre, the Jazz School, Freight and Salvage, that's a typical thing. And close by here, our fund, private fund has funded the Escuela Bilingua here, and it's been very successful. Our interest is in the arts. We finished the Oakland Museum, I became board president of the Oakland Museum, I was chairman of the capital campaign for SF MoMA, and eventually became chairman of that, and then chairman of California College of Arts. I built the Oakland campus and all the San Francisco campus, but got time off of good behavior right now, so I'm free for the moment. Because Cast has become a new model. The private fund that I started 20 years ago was, pointed out to me all of its virtues and many of its mistakes, and decided that what we needed to do was be much more organized in a metal, and that was what created Cast. And that's what I'm excited about to be here today. Cast has been an amazing experience for us, and we have completed a number of buildings and are working on several other ones. We're spending more in, half again as much as our competitors, but in the end, this is still the city of Emeryville, you own this property. Last week, Governor, three years ago, appointed me to the California Arts Council, I was speaking at Southern California meeting, and someone, the head of three major foundations came on and talked about how difficult it is to fund artist housing in the world today. I got up and spoke and got a standing ovation at the end of it. It wasn't advertisement, I was just explaining what was happening, but they said, oh, we wouldn't have expected anything less than the city of Emeryville. So your reputation for supporting the arts is widespread, and I appreciate that. Let me turn this over to the CEO of Cast, Moy Ng.
Thank you, Steve. And before you step off, how much money did you raise for SF MoMA?
$95 million.
There we go, all right. Good evening, all. I'm Moy Ng, the Executive Director of Community Arts Stabilization Trust, also known as Cast, and we're in the business of cultural placekeeping, and we're a nonprofit organization. We do this by acquiring, developing, managing below-market-rate space to preserve affordable, permanently, long-term, real estate for the arts in the Bay Area. That's our focus. So I want to speak to two key elements before I turn it over to my colleagues. One, Cast and Crew's bench strength and deep and longstanding commitment to the development of the Emeryville Arts Center by two of our team principals, Phil Banta and Steve Oliver. At the helm, we three, plus the entire Cast and Crew, comprise over 140, yes, I didn't bring my cane, 140 years of collective experience in fundraising, arts management, real estate development, design, construction, and operations, having funded, built, and operated dozens of arts facilities. We have the commitment and bench strength on our team to deliver a signature project for the city of Emeryville that will benefit the city's residents, workers, and artists, and has the potential of making Emeryville Arts Center the nexus of creative activity in the East Bay on a year-round basis. Secondly, in addition to Steve's fundraising successes, of which he's not a braggart, I have to tell them, I personally have almost 40 years of experience as both a fundraiser and grant-maker in two of the super cities for artists, New York City and San Francisco. Most recently, I served as the honor of the Arts Program Director of the William and Flora Hewlett Foundation, awarding in the 2000s over $145 million to 250 arts organizations throughout the Bay Area, of which $20 million of that 145 went to build over 750,000 square feet of new, affordable, permanent performing arts and visual arts space in the Bay Area across 11 counties. I was hired as the executive director of Cast nearly four years ago and have successfully raised funds for Cast and our real estate projects every day since then, and have secured in less than four years over $27.5 million. So now, I'll turn it over to Thais Swartham, who'll speak to our community engagement and outreach efforts.
Hi, council members. My name is Thais Swartham, and I have been in conversations with the arts community as the Director of Community Engagement with Cast over the past several months regarding this project and opportunity. Cast and Crew brings local, on-the-ground knowledge of the arts landscape and directly knows the needs, the challenges, the opportunities for artists and cultural workers as practicing artists ourselves. Between the one-on-one conversations with artists and the community listening session on May 22nd, we've heard resounding and unified feedback confirming the desire for a world-class arts center, a vision that is directly aligned with that of the city of Emeryville. The community also expressed their challenges and frustrations with affordability, stating that the Emory Arts Center needs to be affordable and accessible, and requesting specifically for affordable housing. You will hear, as you will hear more in detail, Cast and Crew designed a center that reflects this need and addresses the regional affordability. And I will now turn this over to Phil to show that.
I'm Philip Banta, my firm, Banta Design, has been practicing in Emeryville for three decades. Adaptive reuse of industrial buildings and housing design are our core architectural services. It's what we're best known for, and it's what we win design awards for. The Cast and Crew team proposes a visionary solution for Emeryville Arts Center, a 30,000-square-foot repurposed space that meets and exceeds all program requirements for the EAC, along with 21,000 square feet of new affordable housing for artists, 22 family-friendly units, each with a separate work studio across the hall. From the ground floor up, we want to give the EAC a memorable public presence with a new glass marquee and high-profile glass lobby, as well as a fifth-floor arts terrace at the new wing. This elevated community commons will face west with spectacular views of San Francisco Bay, beneath a glass canopy of photovoltaic cells with a dedicated kitchen and terrace. The terrace can serve dinner for all 22 artists and residents at a single shared table, as well as larger special events organized by the city for supporters, guests, and the public. All the arts will have a home here for all members of the community. Entitlements in construction will occur over two phases, as Steve has mentioned. Now, this is a strategy which we have developed in response to the issue of timing. The art center itself will take shape in Phase One, followed by the housing wing in Phase Two. We will have the EAC open for visitors before the end of 2020, with the city subsidy no greater than if we were to build the art center only. We will be raising the funds ourselves for the difference, for a per-square-foot budget that corresponds appropriately to a world-class building, creating a finished complex that will be a compelling return on investment for the city. The Cast and Crew design provides a net-zero-energy, state-of-the-art facility to serve the community and to announce Emeryville's partnership with the arts. The affordable housing wing allows artists from around the state, the nation, and the world to join the Emeryville Arts Community for curated visits, much like the prestigious American Academy in Rome. In addition, the Cast and Crew design addresses a pressing Bay Area need for affordable artists' housing. With this unique, multipurpose complex, Emeryville could take its place on the world stage as a groundbreaking model for living community arts centers everywhere. We invite the council members to bring to Emeryville the iconic arts center it has earned, one that elevates opportunities for its community members as it elevates their reputation for innovation across the arts world. We believe the Cast and Crew proposal will be the next big step in Emeryville's evolution from a city of industry to a true city of the arts.
Thank you, Mayor Bouders, and Vice Mayor Medina, and city council members, economic development staff, and community for listening and for your deliberations. We respectfully ask that the city council members consider voting in favor of entering into negotiations with Cast and Crew for the development and operation of the Emeryville Arts Center. It would be an honor. Thank you.
Thank you. You can hold on one second, I'm going to let them get out of your way, and I'll reset your clock, don't worry. Are you both ready?
Hi, esteemed members of the council, mayors, and city staff, as well as community members, thank you for having us here. We're MSL and Company in partnership with Arts Space, based in Minnesota, and IDA Partners. We would like to present our proposals, and it's an honor for us to be here. We understand our project to create a public and private partnership that is an active, mixed-use arts and community hub, where Emeryville artists can showcase their local artworks and celebrate the city's rich cultural arts history and creative classes. And we have collaborated and combined a bunch of the artists' artwork from Emeryville to create a space to showcase their artwork. We at MSL and Company include a board and team that have deep experience and interest in community projects, housing, homelessness, and affordable housing. Our mission is to build communities for all and equalize Our mission is to build, is to build communities for all and equalize access to opportunities, deliver attractive risk-adjusted return, and with positive community impacts. We've completed over thirty-six projects, served over eighteen communities, and have over 3,500 working hours, and we're a professional firm certified as MBWBSB. We're committed to three different categories: real estate development, development management, and economic advisory, with focuses on community projects, housing, and homelessness. Collectively, our team have experience and have served as Assistant Secretary for HUD under President Clinton, have been voted Affordable Housing Hall of Fame, been on the Board of Freddie Mac, Enterprise Community Partners, and Community Development Trust nationally. We also have been managing directors and also seasoned affordable housing and housing developer, as well as land use economist. Our team, project team, organization structure have included partnership with Art Space and IDA Partners. Collectively, we included affordable housing, arts centers, facility development and operation, as well as mixed-use urban, uh, mixed-use development with an arts district in mind. We also incorporated Sarah Curran, who used to run Stanford's Art Institute for ten years as the operator for the project, who is currently under, running Wesleyan University's Arts Center as well. We've included Turner Construction as our general contractor and construction manager, as well as Langen, BKF, Iomoto, IDA, List Silverman, and Groundwork for Consultants in Engineering and Design. Our team track record spanned a variety of arts and cultures, operation, projects, development, as well as housing, including most recently IDA Partners Arts District in San Diego, the previous Tannery Arts Center, and Spruce Goose Hanger, which is in Pae Vista, Creative Office Space, Pu'una Packing Plant Artist Loft, Center for the Arts, Oakland Fox Theater, Center for Community Life, et cetera, et cetera. We approached the project with a very comprehensive approach with both economic, financial feasibility, programming, operations, and team structures, with all of the process rooted in community engagement approach. And we started with various community engagement strategies, outreach, surveys, liaising partnerships, and speaking with residents as well as artists from large and small corporations, practicing artists, as well as different museums. And we also have a fully integrated arts programming proposed by Sarah, our arts center operator, who used to run Stanford and Wesleyan, in order to figure out what is suitable for Emeryville Arts Center. Some of our cost and revenue assumptions were including about four million, 3.4 million capital in the form of piece financing to achieve a net-zero-energy arts center. We estimated from Turner Construction's cost estimate and entitlement and development costs and permit fee between nine to thirteen million with two different strategies, either master leasing it out with current tenants, or with future tenants, or operating it ourselves. We have a 15%, 10% total soft and hard cost contingency, and also a conservative development expense cost of 13 to 18 million total, depending on the tenant structure scenarios. Our operation's financial feasibility and also long-term sustainability is rooted on several things, including artist-livework housing, coworking spaces, membership-driven from coworking spaces, as well as the arts center's membership fees and visits. In addition, one of the largest portion is also from retail food hall, similar to the Emeryville Market Hall, and also continuous operations. Kristy from MSL and the Designs, I will talk about the design.
Hi, I'm Kristy Ambrose, Development Director at MSL and Company. So we really approached this project starting from the community outreach and everything we were hearing back from the residents, artists, the businesses that we'd reached out to and started from there, and really were focused on creating an adaptive reuse project fundamentally. Saying that, we did make, make two large moves with the roof to make, to make that change on that building. That was for, for a couple of reasons, that we felt really important. One was that we really wanted to create an iconic landmark on the primary corner at Hollis and 40th. The buildings around it just really would, is more suitable for the urban nature of it and just really highlight this as a world-class art facility. Two was to create enough spaces to create the interior and exterior spaces that we needed to really accommodate the, the program that we were trying to allow for inside the building. So while we were restricted inside the, the envelope of the existing warehouse, we really wanted to bring light inside and to create these interior-exterior spaces so that we could do things like create residence for artists and affordable housing and coworking spaces, and, as well as create a primary entry court that would serve as dual purpose for visiting school groups and, and just more, more spaces for families to move around in. As you can see, one of the things that we felt very strongly about as part of that was to really put a lot of attention and focus on to our exterior spaces as much as we were with the spaces and the program inside the building. Celebration of the arts is very much about art galleries, but it's also about sculpture, space, space for sculpture and for performances, and those are not necessarily, not always in a blockback, black box theater, and these are all-round spaces. We really wanted to create the, the backbone for, for those social spaces, for families, for residents, for visitors, and to really just create an encompassing building that, that's pulling, that's really connecting into the space, the buildings and the uses around it. So see, we did create, use a salt teeth roof to create that iconic corner at Hollis and 40th, it also creates a dynamic space inside the main gallery. Those are north-facing lights, which can be shrouded depending on the type of artwork that we're showing. The main gallery also really opens up and it creates flexible art space. Same with the, creating, taking off a section of, of roof which creates an interior, sorry, exterior entry courtyard. Again, just trying to increase the type of spaces that people have to allow for, that can interact with, and to just really use every piece of the, piece of the development. So fundament, so art being at the core of everything we were trying to do in this building, we really looked at creating galleries that would allow, that accommodate the different types of art that we were hearing from the community members, whether it was digital artwork, whether it is Emeryville history galleries, whether it is local artists, but as well as being able to have enough space and accommodation to bring in world-class artists, to bring visiting shows. So the loading, the storage, the, all the, this, um, security, all of those aspects of being able to bring those, those, those uses into this building, really were at the core of everything that we were, we're trying to do here. Again, creating a space of exterior that really, in the entrance, that really connects into all of the public spaces, so into a food hall, into the entrance, which brings you into the main galleries. So everything really being very connected and transparent and, and easily moved through. Celebration arts, we more than allowed for the amount, amount of programming that required, including aspects like classrooms and lecture halls, the black box theater, event halls that have the flexibility to open up and combine into larger spaces, as well as to allow for the smaller, more local changing, quickly changing shows. Also that when, when we were looking at this, it's not only about local artists and about these, these visiting shows, we really wanted to make sure that we were allowing for all of the communities, so looking at, so we created coworking spaces, classrooms, lecture rooms that can, that can really tie into the local school groups and, and create summer programs, and we looked at our program to be a year-round, how we can bring revenue from those, but also just be able to, to interact, bring the, more of the community into this space, and really make it a place for the community. Every aspect of this is accessible, is flexible in its way, its use, but it's really about encouraging the, the arts, the, sorry, sorry, it's, uh, but really trying to increase the exposure of arts throughout the, the city and, and around. It wants to be a destination, we really wanted to bring all those aspects into this building that would create that. And finally, knowing that there is a real push and urgency to this project, we worked really closely with Turner Construction, who put together a, a plan for expedited construction. This would all be delivered in a single phase and with the intention that it would be, would be opened by the end of 2019. Again, we appreciate your attention and your time and we would, we're, appreciate you considering our proposal and partnership.
Thank you so much for this process and for letting us share our experience and our project with you.
Thank you for presenting. Thank you.
Let me actually exit it out of there. Let me do that.
Mayor Bouders, Vice Mayor Medina, City Council Members, I am David Dial with Orton Development, and I'm here with colleague Carol Bradley, as well as architect Marcy Wong. As we've done in other pro, oops. As we've done on other projects, ODI is partnering with Wong Logan Architects and Plant Construction to bring this project to you. ODI is an Emeryville company based down the street near the intersection of Hollis and Powell. For the past thirty years, we've been part of the Emeryville community, and have watched the community grow around us and have a stake in that growth. We're excited to bring our experience to an important project in our neighborhood. We've completed about eighty projects for a total of 20 million square feet, most of which are located in the Greater Bay Area. Nearly all of our projects have been restorations of dilapidated buildings. Our firm has specialized in the refurbishment and adaptive reuse of significant structures like the Union Stampin Building. Our experience in the management and operations of arts and cultural facilities and programs spans several decades. Given our experience with public-private partnerships, historic rehab, and creating spaces for artists, we feel uniquely qualified to take on this project. For complex projects such as this one, we feel it's important to find dimensions of simplicity. Our project remains within the boundaries of the existing structure and city subsidy, allowing us to generate cost savings that will be passed on to local arts organizations that use the space. This approach has also yielded a project that can be delivered quickly. And lastly, our goal is to have this project be sustainable both in construction and operations. Our project requires no additional fundraising or city subsidy. This all combines to reduce the risk to the city. The project will move forward and be fiscally sustainable. And now I'd like to ask Carol to come up and share some of our prior projects.
Hi, I'm Carol. I've been a project manager with ODI for about four years, and I'm going to quickly run through some of ODI's past projects. So I'd like to note that Marcy Wong was our architect for everything you're about to see. This is Pier 70, located in San Francisco before, after, it's now home to Gusto and Otto. I'd like to note that this has been open for only a few months and it's won over three prestigious design awards. This is also Pier 70 before, after, it's now home to Obscure Digital, which is a digital arts company. This is also Pier 70, it was a warehouse, blacksmithing building before, after, now home to Otto's R&amp;D Department. This is Flint Inc., located in West Berkeley, it was a former ink factory. It's now home to Donkey and Goat Winery and another, a number of light industrial tenants. And this is Ford Point in Richmond, taken right after the Loma Parade a quake, and it's now home to Crane Way Pavilion, a multifunctional event space that ODI owns and operates. And with that, I'd like to invite Marcy Wong up to tell you about our project.
Over the last couple of decades, our design firm has completed a wide range of community, cultural, and in particular, performing and visual arts projects. Prominent among this work is the result of our collaborations with Orton Development, in particular Ford Building, Crane Way Pavilion, Rosie the Riveter Museum, and Pier 70. A permanent home for the celebration of the arts is our ASAP priority. Two examples of what this annual event's venue could feel like are the Crane Way Pavilion and Pier 70. Both venues, which are shown on this slide, host arts events, community fairs, with activities extending from indoors through the outdoors. Speaking of which, we are anticipating that the celebration of the arts would use the entire building footprint and extends into the parking lot. The major interior spaces are all flexible, gallery, theater with retractable seating, multipurpose lobby, it's not just a lobby, it's a multipurpose space, childcare, art studios, cafe, and commercial components. Many of our visual arts galleries are in former industrial buildings. The upper-left example is a studio and gallery space for Emeryville artist Richard Misrak. Our extensive track record in the design of performing arts includes over two dozen ground-up or renovated Bay Area venues. You may be familiar with some of these theaters and venues, such as Berkeley Repertory Theaters, Freight and Salvage, Zellerbach Hall, the Jazz School, and the Crane Way Pavilion, to name a few. At the community meeting, we listened carefully and we learned that one of the major issues for some folks is the need and desire for a wide range of activities with diverse acoustical requirements. We are experienced in the successful design of acoustically flexible spaces, that is a venue where very different events can occur, ranging from spoken word to orchestra and everything in between. We're able to provide this with state-of-the-art active acoustics technology, as we have previously done in many projects. On this slide are examples of our artist studios and workspace design projects within rehabilitated former industrial buildings, much like the United Stampin brick structure. Cafe and commercial outdoor areas bring vitality to a venue. These elements could energize not just the building of the Emeryville Arts Center, but also the very site itself. Examples of our commercial projects are Cafe Trieste, Boiler House Restaurant, Rosie the Riveter Bookstore, Pier 70 Piazza, and the Berkeley Rep Cafe. There's nothing more environmentally sustainable than revitalizing an old building with uses that serve the community. This is exactly what we propose to do. Our approach is to highlight the existing architecture's character, materials, natural light, structure, and functional flexibility with programmed spaces serving all generations. And now, back to David.
Thanks, Marcy. As Marcy mentioned, the design of the center's space has Emeryville's celebration of the arts at its core. The festival is a good example of how the center will serve the gathering, as a gathering place for the community for celebrations, convenings, and the sharing of ideas. Key to the center's success will be creating a center robust in activity, breathing life into the corner during the day and evenings. The arts center will provide space for diverse artists from Emeryville, the Bay Area, and beyond. Our view of the typical day at the center has a mix of business, creative, arts, education, and cultural uses throughout the day. The project's sustainability hinges upon this diverse set of uses. Commercial and event activity not only generates revenue, it brings potential patrons to the center. In closing, ODI brings experience to this project. Experience with the complexities of significant structures, experience with providing beautiful, award-winning spaces, and experience with the operations and management of arts programs and facilities. We have taken a complex project and extracted a center with flexible activity, active spaces serving all parts of the community, while also speeding its delivery. And lastly, our approach provides for a financially sustainable project, keeping the overall project cost down, eliminating the need for additional subsidy, and reducing the overall risk of the project. You are to be applauded for bringing the Emeryville Arts Center forward. We are honored to be a part of this process. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the presentations from the three applicants. Thank you to all of you for coming. Thank you to all of you for coming. I'll give that back to you. Thank you. Council, if you're interested—I'm interested in hearing whether you'd like me to call each applicant up in case you have questions for individual applicants before public comment? Or would you rather go to the public comment?
I'm ready for a public comment.
I have some particular questions.
You have questions that won't result in comments of your own?
No.
Didn't think so.
Guarantee.
Okay. Can't guarantee. Then maybe we should turn to public comment. Is that okay?
All right.
Okay. Because I would like to entertain questions if they have them, but without going into our own opinions yet. Okay. So I only have one speaker card. If you fill out a speaker card for this item—I see—it yeah, Archana has one. Go ahead and pass them over to the clerk real quick, and then I will call members of the public who have completed a speaker card to speak. I'm sorry, to share if you could.
Yeah.
And I'll let those get passed up to me here as we go. Members of the public will have three minutes to speak. And the first person I have is Nancy Ng.
Just to clarify, I have three minutes, is that correct?
You have three minutes.
Great. So, good evening, Emeryville City Council members. Well, he introduced me, but before I introduce myself further, I want to thank you and the city manager and the city staff for your dedicated vision and efforts towards the creation of a world-class community cultural arts center in this city. As a longtime dancer, choreographer, teacher, and now arts leader in the San Francisco Bay Area, I am asking you to consider proceeding with the CAST proposal. I am the co-executive director of Luna Dance Institute, a twenty-six-year-old, community-based arts nonprofit, which serves over three hundred teaching artists and school-based educators annually. The artists who study with us live and work here in the San Francisco Bay Area, and they also come from across the nation and other countries. Just this summer, we had artists from Korea, Japan, Canada, and Russia. We also directly serve children and families in our local community. And between 2010 and 2012, we were located in the Emery Tech Building. Children and families came to our dance studio, as well as attended a day-long open studio performance involving twenty local choreographers, and it was so lovely to have hundreds of children at a nearby school walk to our performance. CAST has a proven track record with arts and culture development projects in San Francisco and Oakland, and they have garnered immense respect from the performing and visual arts community here in the Bay Area. We see CAST as our hope for sustainable arts and culture here. East Bay arts organizations and local artists are facing immense hardships with the rising Bay Area real estate. My own nonprofit's rent increased by fifty-nine percent last year, and I were still trying to recover from that, frankly. In addition, we are losing valuable artists who are migrating away from this area. Two years ago, an artist and her family actually moved out of the area, and another artist of mine and her family will be moving to another state next spring. This is something that not only Luna Dance Institute faces, but numerous arts organizations in the Bay Area. The CAST and Crew proposal, which includes artists live in workspace, truly understands our needs of artists and arts organizations. Moyeng, executive director of CAST, is revered in the arts community. I spoke highly of her in the letter I submitted earlier today. And she's revered because she is an amazing visionary and leader who gets the job done. Stephen Oliver, I can sync—
Thank you, your time is up.
Okay. Well, you know what I'm here for. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. The next speaker will be Tanya Rutherford, and after her will be Archana Horsting.
Hi, my name is Tanya Rutherford, and I am the president of a newly-formed nonprofit that has an art space in Oakland. We were created about a year ago in the aftermath of the Ghost Ship fire, and I represent a diverse community of artists who have been displaced since Ghost Ship. And since coming together to create our project, we've been helped tremendously by CAST. And we can all attest to their dedication to keeping the arts alive and to their commitment to the artists, especially underrepresented artists in the Bay Area. We've had plans to develop our space into a live-work space. We're currently a studio space, and we've been able to provide repairs to the building, and put walls in, and just develop our space with the help of CAST. And we've been amazed by their commitment to seek out information from us, and just overall their commitment to seeing what artists need and how they can help, especially in this time of not having enough space that many artists can afford, is really crucial. So we really urge you to choose CAST. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Archana Horsting, followed by Greg Harper.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members and esteemed staff. I know how hard everyone's worked on this. My name is Archana Horsting. I'm an artist and an arts administrator. I've lived in Emeryville for forty years, and in—I've been an arts administrator for forty-five. So I've pretty much dedicated my life to this, and I am very impressed by all the proposals. They're all very good and could all function, but which one do you choose? That's the important question, right? So I would recommend CAST and Crew. And the reason—there's several reasons. I don't know if you were able to look inside the footprint when the roof was off of the model, but it has a straight sightline all the way down. It's like, in terms of wayfinding where you are in the place, it's very easy. It'll be—it'll also allow the celebration for the arts, all kinds of flexible ways to— and the actual theater, instead of being a block here, and then another block for the gallery, and then another block for the classrooms, the theater is on an interesting angle in the space, and you can walk all around that build—that structure inside the space without being blocked. You're going to have beautiful natural light, as well as very good lighting, and I'm sure you can have good acoustics. I would suggest Meyer Sound is a source for that. And I think, as wonderful as their design is, I think the picture of the kind of bright, shiny signage maybe gave the wrong impression in my book, because I think it is actually very well thought through. I love all the storage space and the entryway for sculpture. Having tried to work with different areas and having to design one myself with the help of architects, I know that if you have a simple structure that people feel comfortable in—so that's one big idea. And the other big idea is low-income housing. I mean, below-market housing. How much have we talked about that here in Emeryville, and how much is that a goal for us? And I think that they give the most housing and the most well-situated. To have the workspace cross the hall from your living space means you won't be exposed to—I don't know—oil fumes, or plastics, or glues, or whatever you might be doing in your studio. So, thank you very much. I hope you'll seriously consider it.
Thank you, Archana. Greg Harper, followed by Douglas Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. I too am here to support the CAST proposal. To me, I think the thing that strikes me overwhelmingly is that they arise out of a love of art, all of them. And that is important, and that's why you have a lot of the artist community, because they know of CAST, and they know the people there. Moyeng, I sit on the board of the International Society of Art, Science, and Technology. And hardly a board meeting goes by without Moy's name being mentioned. These are very credible people. And with Steve Oliver involved, he's the contractor, and he has the records of doing all this stuff so many times. I think it's important. And as my wife, Archana, mentioned, it has housing, and artist housing, and there's such a huge need for that. And one of the things I'm—well, the thing I'm most proud about, Emeryville, is that it has responded to housing need. It is the poster child for the Bay Area. Just ask anybody at ABAG. We're the ones that have done it, and we can't lower our sights now. And I think the housing—the artist live-work housing there, and the way it's set up especially in this divided manner, is really conducive to making the financial sustainability of the whole project. And I think that's a key that is really going to be important. And when Steve Oliver says, "This is not going to take a subsidy," you can take—I can see why he can say that one. I can see, okay, now we've got some really good residential income that's going to be helped to help the center. Lastly, as my role as director of AC Transit for this area, I need this housing. We've got, finally, three F buses an hour that are going to be going down Fortieth Street to and from San Francisco because of the demand somewhat from Emeryville, and I have to have this housing to keep it there so that—we say, "Look, that's the demand that we have to have. We want that—we want to serve people like that." It should be four buses eventually, four double-deck buses, but we need that housing, and this is the perfect place for it. It's—we really shouldn't pass up that opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. Douglas Stewart, followed by Alastair Monroe.
Good evening, good evening. My name is Douglas Stewart, from Indigenous House Consulting. I'm a Barre area native. I'm an artist, entrepreneur, and educator, and I support CAST, taking the lead for this development. As an artist who has had his run-ins with finding affordable housing and being able to stay in the Bay Area, their vision of implementing artist housing into this Art Center is imperative. I work in schools all throughout Oakland. I'm a teacher, as I mentioned, an educator and performing artist myself, so fully support their efforts, their vision, and their experience in bringing this true—truly kind of great endeavor to Emeryville. I've lived in Emeryville for nine years in my past as well, so I'm very familiar with the landscape and the people and the artists here as well. And I just wanted to express and come show support for CAST tonight, and I hope that you choose them as this winner in this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. Alastair Monroe, and then Anna Arias.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Alastair Monroe. On behalf of the Oakland Cannery Collective, we're a group of artists, writers, professors, educators, et cetera. I was also the founding producer of North Beach Jazz Festival. I've worked alongside Proceda Eyes, muralist, Mission Cultural Center, along with restoring murals, and been on the board of the Mission Cultural Center Restoration Project, which we fully funded. I'm here to support CAST, and their beautiful support for us. We give our beautiful support to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Alastair. Anna Arias, and— Seven, okay.
Hi, my name is Anna Arias.
Sorry.
That's okay. I'm the executive director and founder of Musically Minded Academy. We're an over-twenty-year-old organization, as Jennifer can attest to. I taught her kids when they were little, and now they're adults. So I am here in support of CAST. We were evicted—Musically Minded Academy was evicted in Oakland last year, and like many organizations, after the Ghost Ship fire, we were evicted on a small technicality, which was happened—is been happening to a lot of organizations. We've had ten LOIs that have fallen through at the last minute. We do not have a space. Prior to being evicted, we served six hundred people per week and housed twenty arts organizations, had a radio show with KPFA that was recorded live in our facility and broadcast in Chicago and in over twenty stations in Europe. So we've really—we've really taken a hit, and in that experience, so many people in the community were upset when that happened, that they reached out to the city of Oakland, and then I met CAST and many—and their partners and many other organizations, and got connected to so many more—so many other artists. I deeply feel that you should accept CAST proposal. We, the artists who are in this community, have been here for a long time, feel this deep allegiance to CAST and know that we are going to be respected in a new facility like this, and it's not just going to be an importation of, you know, all these big arts organizations from other places necessarily, but that the local people that have been here for a long time will have a chance to also thrive in this space. Affordable housing element is also extremely important and so connected in so many ways, as I'm sure you can imagine. So I just wanted to strongly voice my opinion that you choose the CAST proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven. I'm trying to read your last name on here. Asfaha?
Yep.
Thank you. Followed by Eduardo Escobedo.
My name is Seven. I'm the executive director of Atlanta Museum. Atlanta Museum is an arts and culture complex located in West Oakland, and we serve the African diaspora to provide critical safe space to create art and cultivate cultural identity in the face of rapid displacement in urban markets. I'm here to support CAST. We are direct recipients of technical assistance from CAST, which gave us consulting to prepare us and be competitive in this new market. We also were grantees in CAST's Keeping Space Program, thirty-two thousand, which is there to—for us to hire key consultants as a developing nonprofit to sustain and be a thriving new nonprofit. Let me speak on some points. I trust CAST to develop an EAC that's accessible, reflective of, and responsive to the community, as demonstrated in their success—successful real estate and technical financial assistance initiatives known as Keeping Space, which we are direct recipients of. CAST projects are dedicated one-hundred percent, affordable, below-market-rate workspaces, studio space, arts housing, indicating long-term commitment to the sustainability of the art sector. Oftentimes, there's a space that's built that doesn't account for the housing part of the artist. It doesn't make sense to have a very dynamic workspace, artist space, but artists have to live, you know, thirty miles from their workspace. So the housing part is critical. I'm especially excited about the onsite affordable housing featured Cast and Crew design that would allow me and my colleagues to bring master artists and speakers from around the country and abroad to create robust arts residency programs, making the center a physical, creative, and influential centerpiece of the Bay Area. The affordable affordability and crisis data, just reading from that and recognizing how, for artists right now, we're really in a critical state of displacement, and CAST has shown from its efforts and what it's done in Oakland, which is in a really critical situation post-Ghost Ship for arts and arts and culture spaces. They really stepped in and have helped many arts groups that I know, and that's—you know, goes to show that they're really about the work that they say that they're doing.
Thank you for your public comment. Your time is up. Eduardo Escobedo, and then Sharon Wiltshire.
Good evening, everyone. Everyone in attendance. My name is Eduardo Escobedo. I'm an executive assistant, program manager, visual arts instructor, and artist for Attitudinal Healing Connection, right here based in West Oakland. We are an organization with deep roots in Oakland and the Bay Area, an organization reaching thirty years of community healing and engagement, an organization with a great history in support for and from CAST. With our partnership— What our partnership with CAST has shown is that they have been, they have had our best interests at heart, which is why we, Attitudinal Healing Connection, strongly recommend CAST to crew as a developer of the art center, because they keep the Bay Area arts community at their best interest. We trust CAST to develop an art center that's accessible to, reflective of, and responsive to the community, as demonstrated in their successful real estate initiatives, one particular being the keeping, uh, keeping space in Oakland. CAST's previous initiatives have a long-term commitment, commitment to the sustainability of the arts culture. As you, council members, have stated before that you have a strong interest in celebrating the city's culture of innovation, well, you're sharing CAST's vision, which directly aligns with yours, and the city's image as center for art and innovation. So in conclusion, as we strive for a sustainable and vibrant art center here in Emeryville, one that will keep the artists and nonprofits in mind, we ask once again that you vote for CAST to develop Emeryville Art Center to reflect your vision, city staff's vision, and the community's vision for estate of the art facility for Emeryville, the city of art and innovation. Thank you.
Thank you, Eduardo. Sharon Wiltshire, this is the last public comment card I have.
Good evening. So once again, congratulations to the city for providing a format to bring the Center for the Arts closer to reality. And thank you to each of the three, three development teams for their creative and well-researched approaches to the challenge. I've reviewed the proposals, but actually, I would have loved to have had more time to review all the details of each proposal, but ironically, my last several weeks have been consumed by chasing down a venue for this year's thirty-second annual exhibition. I hope by tomorrow afternoon to have a firm agreement, um, for this, albeit a space that will take considerable time and budget for our needs and little time to accomplish this. And I just wanted to say that to any of those here in the room, um, whose phone calls or emails have gone unreturned in the last week, I, I really offer my most sincere apologies because I respect, greatly respect, all of the presenters tonight. And it may seem short-sighted, but I had to focus a hundred percent on an address for a hundred and fifteen artists, a hundred and sixty works of art, and a hundred and twenty-five volunteers. Each of the three teams have put together such strong partners. None of what I have to say is anything that you've not already gleaned from a careful examination of each, but there are a few personal notes I would like to offer. Both CAST and MSL include an affordable housing component, not something required by the RFP, but clearly of interest in the Bay Area, if not throughout the country. As a longtime resident of the nonprofit Limited Equity Forty-Fifth Street Artists Cooperative, I know firsthand the value of such opportunities, both for myself and for my neighbors. Ours is an ownership model, and perhaps as a result, many of our members have invested much time and energy in Emeryville at large. One would hope that rental might provide the same sort of investment by new artists. CAST envisions what appears to be a more dramatic rework of the existing building, but with a considerably expanded budget. Orton Development brings a team with demonstrated experience in performance and event venues, comes in, at least from my perspective, in, uh, on or under budget in a shorter timeline. To all three finalists, an additional question from my perspective, and I, I just think it's really critical, is what, an elaboration on the plans for the sustainability of a viable model. I don't envy the council tonight, and I look forward to helping the selected team move the project forward in whatever way might be helpful to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. This time, I'll call for any members of the public who wish to speak who have not filed the card with me. Seeing none, public comment is closed, and we'll bring the item back for discussion. Before we discuss, um, Member Donahue, did you have a question for a particular applicant you wanted to ask?
Well, I was, uh, interested when, uh, Mr. Banta talked about having the space available for, uh, two thousand twenties art show, even if the housing component wasn't built, is just the practical side of that.
Okay, so what I'd like to do, unless, uh, council members have concerns with it, is I like to, um, invite up each applicant just briefly, and if a council member has a question about the presentation now, they can just ask it before we go through full discussion. So I'd invite CAST and crew to come up first as the first presenter, and, um, uh, Member Donahue, if you want to re-ask your question for their benefit, go ahead. Into the microphone for the audience at home, please.
How would you physically, uh, be able to have us utilize that space while building the housing component?
I think from our standpoint, having done, a good example might be Escola de la Lingua Disparate, that we did that in three phases while the school was in operation. In this case, the, the footprint of the housing component on the south end is actually relatively small, and, but there, the entitlement process for that housing is what we thought was, was long. So we decided to move into two projects, get the art center up and, and functioning as, as soon as we can, and then do the housing with access from the, the south end of the building only. And, uh, having done a lot of work in downtown San Francisco, working with, from that kind of short access is, is something we're very much used to. I don't know if you had anything to add to that, though?
Well, the, again, the, the two, the two phases brings the art center online at the end of two thousand twenty. At the south end of the floor plan is the administrative offices over which the housing takes place. When we acquire the entitlements and permits for the housing, that section right there with the administrative offices can relocate to the flex space over on the north side during the construction of the, uh, housing, and then move back in once it's completed.
Member Donahue, do you have other questions for them?
Uh, no.
Member Martinez?
Yeah, I have three questions, so please, um, forgive me. Uh, can you, first, can you talk, talk about the timing for Phase One and Phase Two, what you envision?
Do you want, you prefer?
Yeah, the, the Phase, Phase One, uh, the entitlements, the city has indicated that they think it's going to be nine to twelve months for entitlements. And then we, we reckon another twelve months for construction in Phase One, so that's the end of two thousand twenty, is what we're anticipating.
End of two thousand twenty for Phase One, and what do you envision?
Simultaneously, we would be applying for Phase Two. So those, those, uh, entitlements maybe take a longer time because it involves rezoning and other things that the lot is not set up for right now. So when those are acquired, possibly six months later, then construction for the housing wing itself would be, what do you think, Steve, twelve months for that?
Maybe fourteen.
Fourteen months for the, for the housing wing.
Okay. Um, my next question was actually a question that, um, Susan Wiltshire brought up, which is, uh, can you elaborate on a plan for sustainability for the ongoing programming?
Do you want to?
We could, we could do that together.
Yeah. The, um, uh, the money grant from the city, we're only using a partial of, and the, and the remaining two and a half million of that, I think is right, we're, we're putting an endowment to begin an endowment, permanent endowment for the nonprofit space of people...
So we're not coming back to the city over?
So the eleven million that's currently in the art center fund, you're telling us that you will use...
Eight, two and a half of that is being dedicated to an endowment for...
Operations.
Beginning of operation, but that's just the beginning of the endowment. Our goal is to go out and raise the rest of it. Uh, we, our goal is at the end of it, that the nonprofits in there that are functioning are, frankly, this is what I do from the, the fund, both the CAST fund and, and my own private fund, is be sure that that, that no nonprofits put at risk, uh, that they're, that we're looking at their mix of earned income and donated income, and being sure that their new, new budget and the occupancy costs are no more than where they are now. That's our goal, that's the goal. That's how we're driven. And we've done that for every project of the fifteen nonprofits that we've funded, and twelve of those nonprofits now own their buildings.
Okay. My final question is, can you talk about the financing that you would have in mind for the affordable housing? Would you be doing it yourselves? Would you be partnering with an affordable housing developer?
It would be a combination of, um, new market tax credits, uh, low-interest financing from foundations and other CDFIs, and hopefully that the bonds, the C, uh, bond funding might consider us, and then there's philanthropic sources. All of that which, when, our focus has always been, certainly in our initial projects, and as we are moving forward to, we're in negotiations late stage with another four projects, all totaling about a hundred thousand square feet, and that's separate of this conversation. And our focus has been to try and get as much philanthropic sources, low-interest financing, because at the back end, it means we can keep to the affordable housing, the affordable rents, and keep it sustainable as a business model.
Do you have experience with, um, packaging, affordable housing, financing?
Uh, we have that...
I, I built probably six hundred units of affordable housing in Berkeley and a couple thousand in the Bay Area.
So the answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Member CAST, do you have questions?
Not at this time.
Member Medina?
Um, yeah, I just, if you could elaborate a little bit on two things. One would be the expanded budget and the five million dollar funding gap, which, you know, obviously just gives us a little bit of concern. And the second would be, um, you know, you mentioned low-income tax credit, um, you know, tax credits for building low-income housing, but we understand that because the current federal administration, those are in shorter and shorter supply.
Right.
So let me answer that question again. The way in which we have had success, though we are a very young organization, as you can see by our team members, the total, what we do is load up on really, in terms of principles, team members that have twenty-five-plus years of experience in each of the key categories that we need expertise around the table. With regard to funding and financing and philanthropy, we've raised in the last, let's see, uh, over the next ten years, I have to raise, and I say "I" because I'm the one who loses sleep over it for CAST, ninety-two million dollars. We currently have in hand over forty-four million and with twenty million in the pipeline. So I just say that as a signal, and that's a combinat, so that's one, most of it philanthropic. So I want to answer that philanthropically, and we're, we're, we celebrate our fifth anniversary in mid-January, so we're very young. Two is with regard to new market tax credits, historic tax credits, uh, there hasn't been a project that we haven't used new market tax credits, and, uh, in fact, uh, we have a very complicated one, that we're using both historic tax credits and new market tax credits, working with the Department of Recreation in the city, as well as with OEWD in San Francisco, and the Arts Commission, which is a fourteen-million-dollar project that is a Phase One of the Geneva Car Barn, which has been left in, at the Excelsior for, since nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, it's been sitting there, so there's a lot of seismic retrofitting, and of the fourteen million, the city has come in with thirteen million, some of it in, uh, new market tax credits and historic tax credits. Am I quoting the numbers right?
That's all correct.
Um, the first two projects also included, that we did in San Francisco, two buildings in, one in the Tenderloin, one in San Fran, in Central Market, also similar in size, uh, ten to fifteen thousand, also included new market tax credits, and also sold AL rights.
So we're doing three other tax credit projects in San Francisco, in the nor, in the Bay Area right now, not all San Francisco.
Right, I'm familiar with the San Francisco projects.
So is, is that helpful to answer?
It is. You know, obviously, when you give us, you know, there's, I see a funding gap of five million, we, we are obviously going to be concerned about that. I understand you have enormous fundraising abilities and a track record of doing so, and I appreciate hearing that.
The three foundation heads at, uh, the California Arts Council last, uh, Wednesday said, "If that goes, you call us." I mean, the idea of this as being a market, a leading market indicator for the, the nation is what they said, is kind of a joint venture.
And the San Francisco, um, Art Center project, that's been substantially reworked, and is that due to anything on your side, or just because of the Board of Supervisors?
San Francisco Art Center project.
Uh, the mid-market expansion, I understand there was a lot of changes to that project. Is that not correct?
That's not the, that's, I'm not sure which project you're speaking about. The two projects that I'm referring to...
The mid-market that, that we did was luggage store gallery and related facilities.
Okay.
Had no expansion at all.
There's no expansion. They've already been acquired. The construction's been completed, and both...
And they're occupied.
And they're occupied, and they're both, both organizations are estimated to serve ninety-five thousand people a year.
Okay.
That's one out of every eight...
At below-market rental costs.
Great. Okay, that's all my questions.
Vice Mayor Medina, if I may add to your question...
Do you use the microphone for the benefit of the people at home?
Absolutely.
So just to add in response to your question around, uh, what if the tax credits were not to be available, since there are some concerns around the federal limitations, we do have access to program-related investments, which is something unique to nonprofit organizations. So as a nonprofit, we can tap into that very low-interest rate funding as another source to, um, fill the gap in our project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So my questions for you, um, the, the first is just the, the timeline that was discussed. You've now proposed to phase the project, I see, into the art center and the, um, the housing project, and...
The goal, getting the art center open as soon as we can get it.
Right. And so my, my question is, is structurally, as you phase that, in the event, God forbid, in the event that you don't end up completing the housing project for any reason, economic futures are always uncertain, right? Is the structure designed in a way to allow for the space where the housing tower would be put to just simply be finished as it is, if that becomes the reality?
That's certainly a possibility, uh, a, a physical possibility. We hope it's not an existing possibility.
Economic one, yeah.
But yes, in which case, we would put the foundations in now so that in case that the residential tower, for some reason, out of our, all of our control, had to be delayed, it would be, could be built in the future.
Okay. My next question is about the fiscal as well. Um, this is the proposal that most concerned me fiscally, and I appreciate all your comments and your good work on raising money for art venues and art-centric projects. It's very different, as we've alluded with some of these questions, to do so for housing. Um, and the amount of money that you've proposed come from Measure C is a very large sum for twenty-two units. Six million dollars of money from the city, where in contrast, we gave a four-million-dollar loan to eighty-seven family-friendly units on San Pablo. So my question is, um, Measure C money may be appropriate here because part of Measure C's goal was to make artist housing affordable. That's something that this entire council is committed to. But the use of new market tax credits, which are at risk, um, and the limited opportunities you'll have for other types of financing due to zoning issues that you have to go through and use issues for the site, um, just make me a little concerned about the long-term feasibility of the affordability to the housing. And so what are your Plan Bs if you do not get the funding you've requested?
Uh, two or three options. One, uh, obviously, that is, the tax credit is, is a portion of it, but we're looking at everything from, I'm doing, looking at two other projects in the, in the Oakland area now for artists, sorry, for, sorry, for, uh, elementary and, and high school teacher housing, because of the same kind of critical shortage of that. In that case, it's a mix of, of new market and philanthropy, just like we're talking, we're gonna have to talk about, we, we, there's a lot of philanthropic interest in something like this, and that combination, and then the worst case, the PRI loan, this program-related investment, which are one percent, one and a half percent loans from foundations. And so those combinations make it eminently, eminently doable. The real question is, is in the longest run, we want to find the leasing processes.
And so if you didn't get six million dollars in Measure C money, you're saying that you would still commit to finding the other resources?
We have half a dozen other sources we'd call.
Okay. And my last question is about sustainability, which I agree with Sharon Wiltshire and Council Member Martinez about, is, um, really the crux of this, because I think what the community wants is an art center, and I feel a little, I'm a little concerned that we've gone down the path of this is now a housing project, and it should be an art center first, right? And I'm not saying that you're not proposing an art center, but the sustainability of the art center in your proposal is largely linked to the success of the housing project at this point. Is that correct or not?
I was the contractor on the previous project that was first shown, and was so disappointed and saddened when it, uh, was taken away from us. But what I was missing was the art side. The arts component is my first love. I chair three foundations all, in the, in the United States, all based and focused on the arts. But you can't deal with the arts and talk to the arts, artists or art world without realizing that, that, that the number of people who have not met, that I heard tonight speak, are concerned about the same thing we are. Until we make, have, find some stable location of housing, and housing that is completely separate from the studios, so they're not breathing the fumes that they work with all day, is so incredibly important.
No, I agree, I agree with that. I'm just curious if there is changes to the economy, and for some reason, the housing portion has to be delayed or can't be produced.
Number one, here is, number one program, here is the arts.
And so is it going to be sustainable financially because a portion of how you're trying to sustain the facility, I understand, is the housing?
Without question. Yes, without question.
So you're gonna privately finance the sustainability?
Right.
The answer is yes, and part of the business model that has been emergent and also has worked, you've seen in other models, because you've done the study, you've seen the study group, so I don't, I'm, you'll forgive me for echoing, because I was not a part of the study group, but based on my experience of working...
Use the mic.
Based on my experience with working over five hundred nonprofit organizations of varying sizes from startup to about eighty-five million annual budget, and the eighty-five was the San Francisco Opera. As a grant maker, as a senior exec, as a fundraiser, as a consultant, I was a consultant with Ford Foundation and a number of other foundations. So looking at the mechanics of what's successful and what isn't, it's usually a combination of looking at the community of its needs, the organizations that are anchor organizations that have a size and scale that can pay affordable rent, and individual artists, and smaller arts organizations that live in community, that serve community, and that gives the coterie of organizations and artists, and provides the level of sustainability and a business model. Without buy-in from the community, buy-in from local artists, and local anchor arts organizations, that's where it starts, if you're gonna create home and a sustainable facility. And I've seen this over and over and over again. And I've seen this over and over and over again, based on my experience. So, short of providing you a white paper, and I'm not being flip, that's my experience in the last almost 40 years in two of the super cities in the U.S.
Okay, are there other questions for cast and crew? Thank you for being here and for answering our questions. MSL, are there questions for MSL? Scott?
Uh, no.
Diane?
No.
Christian? Ally? I have a couple of questions for MSL. Hi, so you have the fastest timeline.
We do.
We do.
And I don't want to gloss over that, because I think that's very important, actually. So, can you, can you explain what about your proposal helps us get this actually done by this time essentially next year?
Sure. We're very mindful of the entitlement process that it takes for a different programming, both for arts and community spaces and affordable housing, having worked at affordable housing firms. And we wanted to approach the project with something that can be expedited by minimizing the impact of current lands and environmental and entitlement process, so we wanted to approach it with adaptive reuse approach. And then phase the project where we can expedite the art center portion as a programming focus first, and then to introduce other kind of programming later. So, when we work with Turner Construction, we brought them in at the first meeting, the entire team was there for the first meeting to figure out what is the approach that is the most easiest way to expedite the project, as well as achieving the ultimate fiscal, financial feasibility, longer and sustainability, and how we can expedite construction. And we did our due diligence, bringing the structural, civil and environmental engineers on site, looking at what the environmental story condition, the structural analysis, to figure out the way to minimize the impact for entitlement process is to use the existing building as adaptive reuse approach. We went through various schemes, so just doing a little bit of a adaptive reuse and a little bit of a design, and then also more elaborate design scheme, and ultimately decided on a compromise where something that's not entirely extravagant, in order to make sure that we can go through the environmental Phase Two, we can go through structural easily, and then doing other introduction of future phases for the existing parking lot for affordable housing later. So, we want to make sure the art center comes first, and we have to minimize impact for environment and entitlement process.
My other two questions for you were, one was about the affordable housing component of it, it's like the optional Phase Two in your proposal, and so how would you be proposing to finance that, or are you not asking for a propose, or you're not proposing that right now?
Yes, so affordable housing is very important to us as a firm, and personally as well, because we're very committed to homelessness and housing. We've underwritten, we've underwritten the deal with 60 to 80 units affordable housing on the parking lot next door as part of the first phase proposal. We decided against it, because we know that there's a funding gap of $150,000 per unit in addition with Measure A1 funding. If we take the entire Measure A1 funding from the county, we would still have a funding gap. So, we decided to look at if there's a market rate component, and we can do some mixed income, as well as some sort of cross subsidies from retail commercial of the market hall, food hall, since the rents is verified, very high for the Emeryville Food Hall, to cross subsidize the programming first before introducing housing later, with the assumption that we're taking the entire A1 funding, plus CDFI money, plus, of course, a little bit of new market tax credit, but also mainly relying on the subsidies of market rates, housing, and also retail commercial from the food, in order to generate enough funding gap and also long-term sustainability. My background when I was managing the CDFI at Bridge Housing, I underwrite all of the deals and the financial structure for all of the housing components, and it's a very challenging process, not just entitlement, but also with the units, and definitely encourage it, more affordable housing to be built, but we also understand the challenge when we underwritten it, and that's why we chose to phase it and just expedited the art center component first.
And for the art center itself, did you want to add on to that?
Yeah, only that, outside the economic side, but there is actually the artist residence that is included in the existing building, and that is part of the expedited process. In that aspect, it is separate housing units and living spaces, separate to the, all the studio spaces and co-working areas.
So, of the amount of money that's currently being offered by the city to help subsidize this project, do you use the whole sum of that in your plan for the original Phase One?
Yes, we actually were able to underwritten it for $9 million at first, without the sawtooth roofs, but we decided to add some visual interest that requires that, and also make it net zero energy sustainable, which we're going to bring in 3.4 million, that's just to make the entire thing sustainable and a little bit more iconic than just a straightforward adaptive reuse approach.
I just feel, the one thing I, I want to comment real briefly, I just feel like your art space has such a good history of building housing for artists, and I just wish that had been more pronounced in your presentation, because you really, I think of the three applications, have the most experience building artist housing, so...
Thank you very much. And they wanted to be here, so...
Yeah, okay, thank you, I have no more, does anyone else have questions? No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Come on up. I'll start on my left with Christian, do you have questions?
None at this time.
Ally, do you have questions?
No.
Diane?
Just, can you remind me of the timing, when you, you would expect to complete this project?
Yeah, we're shooting for third quarter of 2020.
Okay.
For the opening, completion of the cold shell construction in the spring of 2020.
Great, and could you talk about the sustainability of the ongoing programming?
Sure, we're working within the amount of subsidy that the city's providing, and very similar to a prior proposal, look to take a portion of that, a small portion, and use that for startup capital and, and sort of a operating fund. Our model is built on having a portion of the facility having revenue generating ability. So, in addition to the, the cafe, we really see event use, co-working use as generating revenue to help balance the, the budget.
Thank you.
Scott, do you have any questions?
Tell me a little bit about the co-working space and the requirements for making that successful.
Yeah, so, we've taken the, the corner of the building that's closest to City Hall, and we, we would like to break it into a number of small offices, as well as using the atrium space during the daytime as co-working space. And the idea would be that local businesses and creative workers could use that space during the daytime, generating revenue and also generating use in the space. In addition to those co-working spaces, we have conference rooms and the auditorium that we see as an amenity for those coworkers, as well as accessible to civic uses and, and government uses. Thank you.
I don't have any questions for you right now. Unless you wish to, since I gave the other two the same opportunity, just to explain further your plan for sustainability in the event that there are economic changes between now and completion of the project.
Yeah, so, in addition to the subsidy that the, the city is providing for this project, we are standing by to add our own equity to the, the project.
Do you have a cap on what you're willing to do?
Let me see. I just wanted to put them, I just wanted to put them on the spot.
So, I didn't mean to do that, do I, I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, I, I...
We'll say, we'll pencil that one in further, how about that?
For the scale of, the scale of the project, I, I don't know that we, we have...
Private equity is available to help you if you need to?
Yes.
Okay, I have no more questions, anyone else have questions?
Sure.
No, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, council, we're back for discussion on three very good applications to be our private partner in developing the long-awaited Emeryville Art Center. And just as a preliminary comment, I just want to thank everybody for going through this evening with us, it was, that was pretty well done, I think, actually, and I want to thank Emmy, Terrio in particular, and Chad and Charlie and everybody who's helped out. The council said at our meeting in January that we were going to take this off the list this year, I want to thank council for supporting that request, and for staff and prior city manager Carolyn Mayer, Chad and others for helping get that together. And we've gone through a long process, I want to thank the community, the folks from the Emeryville Center Celebration for the Arts, the Public Art Committee, the members of our panel, it's been a long process, and so I'm looking forward to the discussion. And with that, Scott, I'd like to start with you.
Well, I just want to say that the, the arts are, they're a challenging field, if, you know, if I look at my long life, being the elder here on the, the dais, you know, you're, you literally, as an artist, you just, you take a leap of faith and you just start suffering with your lack of funding when you begin. And to sustain that, you, you have to be committed. And the thing about the cast team that impresses me is the commitment that is so important for arts organizations. I don't doubt the Orton Development Company's ability to make that space work with that budget, but I think the character of an art center should be focused on the arts and the diversity of the arts that the cast proposal would embrace, just, I think, would be inspiring for our city. And, you know, you gotta, you gotta think a little bit about not just solving a problem, but making a space that people want to go to. You know, we can't just solve the problem of the lack of an art space, which we have been suffering with. If we think about the future, you, you need a there there, and that cast proposal provides a there there. And I just think that in the long haul, that would make it survive really well. And I also really appreciate some of the things about it that, you know, they're, they're getting those solar panels up there to use them for both modulating light and generating electricity, you know, that the architectural thought, to me, is impressive in that proposal. And I think we would have a true destination if that proposal were built.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Medina.
I first want to start by thanking everyone for coming, even with such thorough and well-thought-out proposals. We're really lucky to have a surplus of good choices here. And I also want to correct what I said in regards to cast, I found what I was thinking of, it was the 950 Center for Arts and Education that fold in 2015, that wasn't you guys, that was Group I, they spent too much on Biarca angles. So, that was a completely separate project. It was just, I remember something right in that area from my history in San Francisco politics. I have to say, I, I do really love the concept of having artist housing onsite, I know Scott lives in such a venue, and it's something Emeryville has a history of. I do not doubt your prodigious fundraising abilities, but having a funding gap going in makes, gives me a little bit of pause, and I can't wait to hear a mayor's thought on it, as our resident numbers guy. I really love the sawtooth roofs on MSLs, and I think ODI has a history of delivering really gorgeous spaces. So, I think we have some good options, but I give a lot of credence to what our resident artist and budgetary experts say here.
Member Pats?
You know, as I look through these, and, and I'm really struck by the simplicity of ODI's project. There's a, a, a German industrial band called Einströmten Sie Neubauten.
Oh, yes, we know. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Pats is speaking right now?
If I had feelings, that would really have hurt. And their name loosely translates to destroying the new architecture, but it's demolition. And it's really this concept of, we build things to knock them down and, and go on. So, this idea of taking what's there and really bringing out the beauty that's there, and this tells you a lot about my aesthetic, calling a brick beautiful, brick building beautiful, I just really like that concept. I would love to build artist housing, I would love to build more affordable housing. For me, again, I go back to simplicity, that's not this project, this is about the art center. I hear about the, the workspaces. I'm also swayed by the fact that you're right down the street, I love that concept, I love keeping things in Emeryville local. I have some concerns with the other projects, I liked MSL's design, I liked some of the things you say. When you tell me that Turner's going to get it done in a certain amount of time, that gives me pause. Turner is very fond of over-promising and under-delivering.
I knew when they said Turner, I was like, oh, Mr. Pats.
Yeah, not their biggest fan. But, yeah, I, so I'm, you know, I'm really, I really, I do have a lot of appreciation for the ODI model.
Member Martinez?
I, I just think all of these applications were stunning. It's a, the, the community that comes along with cast is amazing, but I, I echo some of the concerns that my colleagues have brought up, just, I, I wrote down simplicity also here, because a, having spent time in the Crane Way Pavilion, I have an appreciation for how they make it all look so easy. And I, I'm glad that you brought up the acoustics in that space, because it's easy to think that a, a large, empty space might be not friendly to different types of uses. I'm, I'm kind of torn between the, the two, those two proposals, the cast proposal and the ODI proposal, but I, I am really, I'm thinking about the economy in the next few years, I'm thinking about the, the state of fundraising for all sectors, including the philanthropic sector, and I think we have a, kind of a choice between bird in the hand with ODI and one in, and two in the bush with cast, with the affordable housing component. And we all, everyone on this, behind this dais agrees that we need affordable housing, and we are all in favor of affordable housing for artists, and that's something that we will continue to explore, but I have to agree with Councilmember Pats, that this, this project, our focus is, is, is the art center first and foremost, and that, that getting that done in an expedited manner with minimal subsidy is something that we asked for in the RFPQ, and I, I think ODI meets that criteria best.
Okay, so, it likes your computer. So, I want to thank everybody for all the time that was put into bringing these proposals to where they are now. You know, the, the thing that, as we went through this process and I had the opportunity to meet with staff and review the proposals when they came before the panel, you know, the, the primary objective was to deliver the city an art space for the access to public art for the broader community and a home for the Emeryville Celebration of the Arts. That was the primary goal, and so that is the goal that I have focused on, and I think there was a slide, it was the third or fourth slide that Emmy presented, that had, and I wrote it down, reminding us of what we identified back in January as our primary goals, and they were to minimize city subsidy while ensuring fiscal sustainability of operations, to expedite the completion of the project, to maximize civic and community engagement, and to provide for multiple uses for art venues. And all of these proposals do those things in various ways, and so, we have the fortune of having the wrong, the right kind of problem, which is, we have to choose between very, very good proposals. And I like each of them for different reasons. I really like the cast proposal because of the housing component it provides and the vision that it has, but I will be honest that there are so many different contingencies and procedural pieces involved in making that project work over an extended period of time, that it does give me pause when I look at this as, we have had the opportunity to build an art center for this community for almost a decade or more, and we have not yet delivered on it. And I think the goal here is to give the community an art center first and foremost, so that we can fulfill that vision for ourselves and do so in a responsible manner that ensures that it's sustainable. That's not to say that the cast proposal couldn't do that, I just believe that the current status of where we are today, the timelines that are presented, and the amount of other factors that could intervene or risks that could be presented to the financial sustainability of the project are minimal when we use Orton Development. And so, I'm supportive of Orton's proposal first, although I like... And so I'm supportive of Orton's proposal first, although I like all of them. So, is there further discussion?
I move we adopt Orton's proposal.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Member Pats and a second by Vice Mayor Medina to approve a resolution approving Orton Development as the private partner for the Emeryville Center for the Arts. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
No.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters?
Aye, the resolution is approved. Thank you for coming this evening. If you wish to take a step out, before we move to item 12.2, you may do so now.
So you've got to teach me how to say the exact phrase that you said, which Diane got the best third ever on.
The E-I-N.
Item 12.2 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville adopting the Public Art Committee's recommendation. Please take your conversation outside. There's a meeting going on, please take your conversation outside. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville adopting the Public Art Committee's recommendation to select the proposal of Windjetty for the Emeryville Marina Public Art Project and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with artist Ned Khan for design fabrication, transportation, installation of the artwork. Councilmembers, do you wish for a full presentation?
Or at least pictures.
Or pictures?
How about some pictures?
Pictures.
This is Ned Khan's proposal. It's on 540 linear feet of the breakwater that exists in the marina today. These videos, it's actually videos, I guess I wanted to show you. He focuses on movement, and this has been in his backyard for something, in multiple years. He wants you to know it can weather just fine. This is when you get a good wind going. This is it, with its scale shown from back, there is some perception we'd be able to see it from I-80. He, one thing you just should know, just information, he's volunteering to do this for the cost of the materials, and he's seeking private support and donations for any fee he gets for the work. So the contract that's before you tonight has that assumptions within it. It's expected to be done in a year. The only other pictures I have are the other finalists, which is going to be considered for playground safety and financial assessment. We might look at some other funding sources.
Okay. Are there questions for staff on the presentation? Seeing none. At this time, we'll entertain public comment. Members of the public who wish to speak on item 12.2? Seeing none. Any discussion? Member Pats?
You know, I was so in love with the serpent, I'm just going to be saddened, so.
It's coming back.
I, well, lots of things are coming back, but I was really attached to the serpent. I'm not so attached to this, and partially because I think this needs to be seen. I don't think the mockups or even the video do it justice. I saw it.
Shake it vigorously for us.
Member Medina, comments?
That was it.
Member Martinez?
I was just wondering if, what evaluation, if any, has been done on how it would interact with sea birds or wildlife?
So we will be getting a BCDC permit. I don't think that they have that as a particular screening criteria or worried about that. It is very light. Questions about roosting on it were described and thought about by the artist significantly. It's a very narrow tube from which this hangs. It's very lightweight. I don't want to go into the details, but it's, the, the ratio of, of the circumference is too big for small birds and too round for big birds.
Okay. I appreciate that it was considered.
Wow. Thank you.
That's, that's actually helpful. Member Donahue?
I've known this artist for more than 20 years. He's credible, meaning he'll do what he says he'll do.
I just want to join Councilmember Pats. I, if we had to choose tonight, I would have voted for the serpent hands down, and so, not because this is a bad proposal, but because I just, the imagery and the history tied to it and all those pieces, and I understand that it is technically still being called art and not a play structure, and so it's going through a public safety sort of review, but I'm very excited to hopefully seeing the serpent come back here on a future agenda because I think we should put it in the marina personally.
And to clarify, it's going through the public safety because it's being considered potentially a play structure. Art does not, if you, there were, there were sort of four pathways. One is to consider it public art and say that doesn't apply, so the attorney needs to opine on that. The other is to adjust it. The third is to put signs up and say, climate your own risk. And the, the fourth is to say, let's do this assessment, and then with that information, determine if we think signs or modification or appropriate liability, leaving it just the way it is, is acceptable. And then we might consider looking at marina funds to commission that work. And part of this is that we've done, a lot of the upfront costs were paid for with art funds, so there'd be a matching of, of two different funding sources, and the benefit would accrue directly to the marina. And the notion of a larger kids' play structure that had been thought about in this area versus a smaller kids' play area in another area that might meet those needs, and Pedro was on the selection panel, and there's some talk about that, and so that's what we'll come back to you to say. Does that make sense? Is that something you want to see? Thinking about using those funds in that way and thinking about that liability with the focus?
The future one.
That's what will come back because we need some time to think about how to do that and if there's enough money to do it.
And remind me, does this particular project, this one does not use marina funds, right? Just the other one?
No, this is 100%.
Yeah.
Well, so what it, it is funded for all materials by the Art and Public Places Funds, and any funds that the artists can seek as donations would be private funds. And the city has made clear that there's no advertising opportunities for those kinds of donations, though we might add them to the plaque association with this work.
Okay.
I, I just want to make sure that you know that I think this is fabulous, this Ned Khan will really add to our city. I didn't say that, you know, I'm saying he's a credible artist, but I think it's really going to make itself into a destination. I think we'll, people are going to go out there and they're going to be amazed at this. People are going to be driving out to the marina, they're going to see this thing, and it's going to seem like, that's, that's water, but it's not. What is that?
Can you see it from inside the marina? Because it's on the outside of the breakwall.
Yes, so this is at the very end, in the image before you, is the fishing pier, and so you could stand at the fishing pier and look the whole line of it.
Okay.
And any place in the marina, as, as Ned said, he saw it as a gift to the boaters and those arriving to the marina, everybody going through it will see it. I was recently up in Tilden, looking back and saw the breakwater and became very intrigued by the prospect that I might see the glimmer of this from as far as there.
Can I ask Scott a question?
You may.
Do you think it'll be sort of like the Bay Bridge Lights project, where it's like subtle, but you notice in it, you notice it eventually? Okay.
Yes, except it won't be.
Costly.
Lights, no, this is made by the wind, you know, people are going to be, it'll feel more natural.
Mm-hmm.
And celebratory of place, I think.
Okay.
Member Donahue, would you like to make a motion?
I, I move that we approve this.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion by a member Donahue and a second by a member Martinez to approve the, the resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters?
Aye, the resolution is approved. Thank you. Item 12.3 is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville repealing and replacing Chapter 29 of Title V of the Emeryville Municipal Code Smoking Pollution Control, Seco Determination exempt. I'd like to make a motion to read this by title only.
So moved. Or second?
There's a motion by Mayor Bouters and a second by a member Pats to read this ordinance by title only. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Bouters?
Aye. I'd like to ask that we waive presentation. Everyone agree?
Agreed.
Agreed. At this time, I'll entertain public comment. Is there members of the public who wish to speak on the smoking ordinance? Step to the microphone, Ms. Tamika. There's three minutes to speak on this item.
Good evening, Mayor Bouters and City Council. I just wanted to thank you for all of your hard work over the past, what has it been, Councilmember Martinez?
Two years.
Two years, over two years on this policy. You all are making a huge step forward in public health, and Mayor Bouters, you'll be happy to know that on the Smoke Free Housing section of the American Lung Association's report card, you will now receive an A. So kudos to the city for that, and I thank you for your partnership. I look forward to working with you all to make sure that this ordinance is implemented well. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none. Member discussion? Member Pats? Medina?
No.
Martinez?
Nope.
Donahue? I'll be voting with the motion tonight that I assume we'll be doing here at second reading, but I just want to register my ongoing disagreement with the future of smoking lounges in Emeryville. This time, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
There's a motion by a member Pats and a second by Vice Mayor Medina to approve this ordinance. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
First, I would like to register my agreement with the mayor.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
If you had voted no, we were about to have a throwdown. I was going to call a recess.
That was a close call.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters?
Aye, the ordinance is approved. Can I entertain a motion on the memorandum of understanding with the County of Alameda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved by everybody. Now, we'll give the motion to a member Pats and a second to Vice Mayor Medina.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Please call faster.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters?
Aye, thank you all for your weeks of patience with us as we batted this thing around, but we have passed it, so it's done.
Ron Freund, if you're watching at home, we're done.
We're done. Okay, that concludes item 12.3, the resolution, and the ordinance are adopted. Item 12.4 is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville amending Section 2-7.601 Declaration of Policy. I'll entertain a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by a member Pats, second by Vice Mayor Medina to read this by title only. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters?
Aye, I'd like to ask staff, can we waive presentation, members?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
This is essentially an amendment to an ordinance that simply changes the maximum period of time which the city manager can be contracted from two years to three years. Members of the public who wish to comment on this ordinance may do so now. Seeing none, is there any discussion?
Nope.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Medina, second by a member Martinez to approve this ordinance. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters?
Aye. Okay, the last two are the items we still have to discuss, really. So 12.5 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville amending the budget for fiscal year 1718. Susan Shea?
I have a short presentation. Good evening, may and council members. For your consideration tonight, yen budget adjustments for fiscal year 1718. The proposed budget adjustments reflect large financial transactions that were mentioned in the mid-cycle budget report. At that time, the fiscal impact was not known. Budget adjustments also reflect funding to support community programs and council goals and priorities. Other adjustments include contributions to fund pension liability, support operations, and strengthen fund reserves. The goal is to plan ahead and stabilize costs for future years. I would like to summarize the general preliminary financial results before we reveal the significant, significant budget adjustments. Our revenues exceeded our budget by 2.8 million, primarily due to one-time revenues from development projects and property transfer tax. One of the large property transfer tax transactions generated more than 1 million in revenue. Please note that certain development revenues were offset by project expenditures. City departments remain physically responsible in 1718. The budget was under, sorry, the expenditures were under budget by 3%, mainly due to one-time savings from vacant positions, lower than budget counter obligations, and the CalPERS credits mentioned in the staff report. The city's budget policy states that one-time money should be spent for one-time expenditures. The city usually generates significant one-time revenues from development projects and large real estate transactions. For example, about half of the 1718 property transfer tax revenue was generated from a few large transactions consistent with the budget policy staff is proposing to use one-time money for one-time expenditures. The budget adjustments were revealed by the Budget Advisory Committee last week. The committee recommends reducing contribution to the ID Fund and increasing the contributions to the Disaster Fund and the Persh Reserve Fund. This slide summarized the proposed contribution to other funds. Due to committee concerns about contributions to the Vehicle Replacement Fund and the Information Technology Fund, staff recommends keeping the money in the general fund reserve and allocate to projects in the next budget cycle. Next, I want to go through the proposed contributions to the other funds. The contribution to the Community Program Fund is to support the Age-Friendly Cities Program, the A2Go Shadow Service for seniors, and the Community Grants Program. The contribution to the Disaster Fund is to increase the reserve balance. The current balance is about 2.4 million, and the goal is 5 million. The contribution to the Persh Reserve Fund is to set more money aside for the city's pension liability. The contribution to the Capital Fund is for condition assessment study for city facilities, and the study will help to plan for the next CIP budget. Contributions to the Workers' Comp Fund and the Dental Insurance Fund are due to anticipated increase in costs and to ensure adequate fund balance in those funds. The contribution to the Major Maintenance Fund is due to anticipated increase in costs and funding for a two-maintenance equipment. Does the City Council have any questions or recommend changes to the amounts?
Okay, is that the end of your presentation?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay, at this time, are there any clarifying questions about the presentation?
One, so was this the contribution to A2Go, is that in lieu of finding a permanent source of funding for A2Go ongoing?
Yes, in a way. We are currently in negotiation with Oakland to get contributions from them. If we are successful in obtaining contributions with them, our costs will go up significantly. But what we are proposing is to have enough money to fund our programs for the next couple years, just in case we don't get the money.
Okay, what, and what's the, what type of funding are we exploring with Oakland?
They, I believe they also would like to use Measure B money for this program. Pedro, can you correct me if I?
Okay.
That's correct, is what he said. Okay. Other questions? No? Okay, at this time, we'll entertain comment from the public. Any members of the public who wish to speak? There's so many of you. Okay, public comment has closed, and we'll bring it back for discussion. Vice Mayor Medina?
I'm interested to hear what came out of your budget committee discussion before I discuss further.
Okay, member Pats?
Well, now I want to know what came out of budget committee.
Should I go first?
Yeah.
Okay, so I want to thank staff for the time we've spent in the past week reviewing this item, and I want to thank the Budget Advisory Committee. So the analysis on this slide that, and the discussion that was yielded from this is that there are a couple elements in the green boxes here that are unusual to how we usually handle surplus funds. So the bottom two funds, in fact, the bottom three funds, although the major maintenance fund, there are some different elements to it. The things that are proposed to be funded in those two categories are largely things that are on department head wish lists, so things that department heads would like to have, especially under the Information Technology Fund, comprehensive change to technology system that, my understanding is, needs to be funded in pieces over a number of years in order to actually have the total revenue necessary to make the change that needs to be made. And there are definitely needs for vehicle replacements within Public Works and the Police Department on a regular basis in particular. The issue is, rather than make those allocations in a mid-year adjustment like this, it's generally more appropriate to hold the revenues over into an unassigned fund, and then to collectively assess when we do our budget in the next six months, what are the total needs, as opposed to kind of picking favorites now for things that aren't emergency needs that are currently on the budget for the current year. So these are things that would fund future year programs, and although we could allocate the money to these line-itemed, these line-itemed issues, it is a best practice to simply hold the money. There's, it's not going anywhere, we unassign it, and then when we look at the total set of needs... of needs that other departments may present to us in the next budget cycle, we can then assess how much we want to allocate at that time, because if we allocate it now, we could always go take it back, but then it kind of becomes this we gave and then we took away. So, the major maintenance fund was also on my list of things to look at a little more closely, but I would be satisfied taking the 240 and the 840 and putting it in general fund reserve unassigned, with two exceptions. I would take $200,000 out of that sum, and I would allocate $100,000 more to the disaster fund and $100,000 more to Pers liability, because both of those are funds that we are, we know we are deficient on, that we need to make advance payments on. And so, assigning a small amount of that money now doesn't harm the future ability to fund things in the other programs when we get to the next budget cycle, but it does yield a higher return by investing in those other funds that are, have the asterisks next to them now. And so, I just would check with the city manager. I've captured our discussion on this, and you would agree or not agree with my statements.
Yes, Mayor, you've articulated it well. I mean, obviously, as you said, I think December's when you begin the budget process. Most cities, when they, when they're going through this, the process of a fund balance, discover it really, given especially the fiscal realities we live in today, with respect to who knows what the economy's going to do, the fact that I think this city went through some budget crunching last year, the idea of having some flexible funds to help balance your budget next year makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, so the goal here is that these are, it's not to say that the things that are requested for fund, the items under these two funds, aren't worthy of being funded. It's just that when you look at the hierarchy of things we had to prioritize during the last budget cycle, these would have been things that would have probably been at a secondary level to other staffing and services-based decisions we had to make. And so, by holding this money in the general fund reserve, we have afforded ourselves flexibility in budget-making decisions that we would be limited by if we made this change today. So, that's, I don't know if there's, now want to have comment or discussion?
I have a question for staff. I agree with your proposal, and I was just thinking about the age-friendly communities allocation, and I just wanted to ask Pedro if that, that number arose out of, I know exactly what it's going towards. I know it's going towards helping get our, our assessment and figuring out where we are as a city in terms of how we meet the criteria of age-friendly communities, but I'm just wondering where the number came from? Do we, have we identified a consultant, and this is how much it would cost? Because I, I just want to let council know that I think this is going to be money well-spent. And is, is there going to be a need for more, or?
Yes, I think this is the initial funding needed to get a consultant who's going to help us train the volunteers, the whole community meetings, which will keep the cost down for right now until we find out what the other needs are and how we need to look into them further through other resources.
But this, this should tide us over until we get to the, the budget process?
Yes, I think so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other comments? Member Donahue, you have anything?
No, I appreciate what you're saying about holding off.
Member Pats? Member Medina?
I agree with the assessment that, especially since we are coming off of a budget cycle where we had to look at reductions, saving some money for us to have flexibility next year, especially because all of us have voiced anticipation that the economy might change in the next couple of years, is very prudent, and that is why I was waiting for what I'm sure was going to be a fiscally prudent idea from you. So, yeah, and I really agree with increasing our, what we put into disaster and Pers liability.
So, if there's no other discussion, I'd like to make a motion to make the contributions provided in this list with the following adjustments: increasing the disaster fund 277 to $1 million, increasing the, increasing the investment in Pers liability fund 715 to $1 million, taking the remaining $40,000 from the vehicle replacement fund and the $840,000 from the information technology fund, and moving them to the general fund reserve. That'll be my motion.
Second.
The motion by the mayor, and second by member Pats to make the adjustments to the budget allocations as dictated in the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. And then I would just like, as a follow-up matter, for the pension Pers liability fund, perhaps to schedule for the committee's analysis whether this should be put into the liability fund or moved into the 115 trust? Thank you.
Right.
Okay. Item 12.6 is a discussion of legislative actions for the November 2018 ballot. Madam Clerk?
Staff did not plan a presentation for this, but there was a request for recommendations from our consultant, Townsend, and they have provided that memo, which was attached to your staff report, and then we further provided the full text of all the bills, just for your information.
That's right. So, members, what I'd like to do is, just to have a record before I call for public comment, we received a memo from Townsend about the ballot measures, and there are 12 ballot measures, which include 11 propositions, because Proposition 9 was withdrawn, and then Measure FF, which we heard a public comment about earlier this evening. And then what I'd like to do is, just to cover very briefly for the benefit of the public, Proposition 1 is SB 3, the Veterans and Affordable Housing Bond Act. Proposition 2 is AB 1827, the Committee on Budgets, No Place Like Home Act. Proposition 3 authorizes bonds to fund projects for water supply and quality, watershed, fish, and wildlife. It's a bond. Proposition 4 authorizes bond funding for construction of hospitals providing child health care. Proposition 5 changes the requirements for certain property owners to transfer property tax based on their property to a replacement property involving a constitutional amendment. Proposition 6 eliminates the recently enacted road repair and transportation funding, also known as SB 1, which is the gas tax. Proposition 7 is the implementation of AB 807, which is daylight savings time changes. Proposition 8 authorizes the state regulation of kidney dialysis clinics and limits charging to patients. Proposition 9 was withdrawn. Proposition 10 expands local government authority to enact rent control on residential properties by repealing the Costa-Hawkins Act. Proposition 11 requires private sector emergency ambulance employees to remain on call during work breaks. And Proposition 12 establishes new standards for confinement of farm animals, bans the sale of certain non-compliant products. Proposition, I'm sorry, Measure FF is the Wildlife Protection Safe Parks Trails and Public Access Natural Habitat Measure for Alameda County. What I'd like to propose is, I will call for public comment on all of them at one time, and then for items where there is a recommendation, perhaps we can move through those first to see if there's discussion, because I think we might be in general agreement. We'll take those off the list quickly, and then we can discuss the handful that we need to discuss. Everyone agree?
Yep.
Yep.
At this time, I'll call for public comment. Members of the public, there are none? Okay, so on Proposition 1, there's a recommendation of support to approve the Housing Bond Act. Is there any discussion or debate wish to discuss this in further detail? If not, is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by member Pats. I'm sorry. Which of you motioned? I just blanked.
I said.
Yeah, you both pointed at each other. A motion by vice mayor. You want to do one motion at the end, or do you want direction?
To clarify, my pointing was the accurate pointing.
Yes, you were correct. She was wrong. Would you like one motion at the end? That would be easier for you?
It kind of depends on where you weigh in on the full slate of recommendations that were made, but I don't think we need an individual motion.
Okay, I'm going to keep a track, and at the end, we'll do one motion with everything we agree on, and then if anything we don't agree on, we'll vote on separately. So, I'm hearing of, everyone is in consent on that one. So, on one, I have, I have, I'm going to write down the word "support." Okay. On Proposition 2, which is the No Place Like Home Act, there's a recommendation of support. This is to put money from the Mental Health Services Act that is currently legislatively being moved from Prop 63 to accelerate that by allowing for, it by ballot measure, because it's currently held up in the courts. Anyone opposed to this for any reason?
No.
Okay, so everyone's supporting 2. Proposition 3 is the water bond. Is there, it's recommended support. Anyone wish to discuss?
Nope.
Now, everyone agree? Okay, 3 will be a support. Proposition 4 is the bonds for hospitals providing children's health care. There's a recommendation of support. Does anyone wish to discuss that one? 4 will have a support. Okay, 5, the recommendation on this one is discussion. Should we table this one?
Yep.
Okay, 6, the recommendation is to oppose. This is the repeal of the gas tax. We are getting SB 1 money, just as a reminder, for our railroad crossings. Does everyone agree to oppose?
Yes.
Okay, so that's part of the motion. 7, daylight savings time. It says discussion needed. Do people want to discuss that, or do we want to eliminate daylight savings time?
I want to eliminate daylight savings time.
I've literally never considered that.
Christian, do you have an opinion?
I really don't, but I could support eliminating it, just because member Martinez is.
Scott, do you have a position?
I really don't.
You don't care, or you don't have a position?
About, about the issue.
I'm not a farmer. This wasn't made for me.
Okay.
We, let's, should we hold it off?
She's got a thought on it. We'll hear on it.
Let's discuss, yeah.
Okay, Proposition 8, it's kidney dialysis.
Strongly support.
Okay. So, you support this one, has a recommendation for discussion. Does, does everyone else support this?
I actually support this one.
Support it.
Support. Scott?
Well. Okay, I'll support it.
Okay, so it's going to have a support. 9 isn't, does not exist. 10 is repealing the Costa-Hawkins Act, recommended support.
Right, for.
Christian?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, 10 is a support. Don't worry, Sherri, I'm going to give you a full motion. 11 is requiring ambulance employees to remain on call during work breaks as an exception to an otherwise statute, statute related to employment, supported by the Californians for Emergency Preparedness, opposed by CTA, recommended discussion. What do folks want to do on this one? Discuss it?
Discuss, yeah.
Okay, so I'll skip 11 for now. 12 is new standards for confinement of certain farm animals. For, discuss?
Support.
Support.
I oppose.
I oppose.
So, we should discuss that one?
Okay.
Okay, and then Measure FF, the county's, the county's wildlife protection for the parks, continuing the existing tax of $1 a month. Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. So, that leaves 1, 2, 3, 4 to discuss. Okay, so we're going to begin with number 5, which is changes requirements for certain property owners to transfer their property tax. And as a summary, if you purchase or own a home at the age of 55, and you choose to transfer your tax assessment, it basically allows you to keep your base tax assessment rate to any new property you transfer to. So, as opposed to being reassessed under Prop 13, you basically get to carry your low tax base. Does anyone wish to open on this? Because if I do, we might be here for a long time.
I'll oppose it.
What's, I oppose this strongly.
Yeah, I'm against it as well.
I totally oppose this.
Yeah, I, it just.
It's a, it's a.
It's a trap.
It seems to me you've got five opposedes.
Anything that's supported by the Realtors Association is worthy of an oppose.
And my brethren in CTA are against it.
Okay, so we are going to oppose number 5 unanimously. Number 7, daylight savings time.
Diane, please tell us.
So, I thought this was really funny when Kenson Chu brought this up a couple years ago, but I, then I really felt the full impact of having children and daylight savings time, and children who are trying to wake up for school and be awake and not walk into the street while a car's going to hit them. And I've further discussed this with seniors who have similar issues with their time shift and it affecting their ability to function on their schedules. I, I just don't see the need for daylight savings.
So, I'll play the devil's advocate here. Growing up in farm country, the benefit of daylight savings time is that there are times of the year where there's not enough sunlight to actually, many families that have young people who work before they go to school, you know, my grandparents had a hog farm, and you had to do certain things before you went to school, and there were times of day where it was too difficult to do that due to daylight, and so the whole point was just to change the sunlight hours. So, actually, farm animals were actually, that are, that wake up at certain times of the day and don't come out until the sunlight is out and don't feed until then. It actually allowed for family farms to better engage livestock. So, not that that is our issue here in Emeryville, but that's the basis for why you might consider opposing it, but I do not oppose this. So, if people want to support it, I'm okay with it.
Okay, let's.
Or we could take no position.
I have not studied this in detail, to be honest.
Do, position or no posi, does?
I support it.
Support, support?
I'll support.
Abstain.
I'm throwing my support.
Would you still vote for a motion that includes this as a support?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, we're going to support this thing. Get rid of daylight savings time, why not? While we're at it, things we're going to try and solve in the world.
We're like the only city that does this.
Well.
That means we're following.
We'll give them, councilmember Martinez's number. I'm just kidding. Maybe. Okay.
All the cannabis farmers will finally.
Okay, so 11.
They'll use artificial light.
11 and 12. 11 requires, 11 is a little complicated.
Yeah.
11 provides training and other resources to employees who do emergency response. I read this entire thing earlier today, but it essentially creates an exception to court, court case law that the Supreme Court required that employer required time off was basically inviolable, and so you couldn't say that somebody, when they're on their lunch break, you couldn't call them back to work from their lunch break. And the issue where this became a problem was scheduling around emergency response, and I don't know if either of our public safety folks want to opine on this, maybe fire in particular. Do you have any opinion on, on this matter that you want to share with us? Either of you? The, the issue being whether or not we should require that a person respond at a private ambulance company in the event an emergency arises. They can be called back from their lunch break. They get their time back, but they have to respond to a crisis if they're on duty.
Correct. So, there's really no lunch break. You're always on call. So, they don't, if they get a call during their half an hour lunch break, they still have to respond to it, and that's what the debate is about.
Right, and so this is for private employers, because I guess under, there's a court case law that says for private, unlike a public agency, that you can't make them actually show up. So, private ambulance companies are in the position of, they have to add staff at certain overlap periods of the day, so that if one person is on break, the other person has to be available to respond. And so, do you, I mean, you're a public agency representative, but do you have an opinion about the necessity of that and whether that's an important thing or not?
Not for the private companies.
But you, you think that, do you think generally that emergency response personnel, like ambulance drivers, should be called off duty if necessary?
They should respond when called. There's no worries.
Do you have an opinion?
Yes, I think they should, because sometimes we use private companies, and any delay in providing emergency response can be life-threatening. So, if they choose to do that, play that role in our community, then we should be guaranteed that we have that service available.
Okay, that's helpful to hear. Discussion, anyone? Have thoughts on this one? It does provide them training that has to be included in their regular pay scale hours, and so they get trained on other things, and that they have to be paid regular time. It doesn't count as time off or other things that the employer has to provide as well.
I don't feel like I have enough information on this. I, I don't understand why the CTA is voicing an opinion.
Yep, go ahead.
I believe in the, in the, there's no rebuttal to the proposal.
They didn't submit a ballot argument.
There's no argument against it at this point.
Do you know why the California Teachers Association opposed it? It's written in our memo is that they took a pose on it.
No, I do not.
Okay.
Coming from a world where the 30-minute uninterrupted lunchtime is sacrosanct, I'm not surprised that CTA came out against this. I struggle with it. I think about the people I've known who've worked on ambulance rigs, and the, with any business, it's call volume and maximizing their time. So, I, I have concerns, but I have to agree with the other members. I just don't have enough information.
I have to do a no position on this.
So, I have one person with no position?
Yeah, no position.
2, 3.
I agree. I'm opposed, but I'm comfortable with a no position.
Okay, we're going to put no position on Proposition 11. Okay, and that brings us to my favorite one, new standards for farm animals and their confinement. So. Ally?
We're going to have some, like, different reasons about this. It's going to be funny, though.
Go for it.
All right, I think California has previously passed some propositions from the Humane Society that were meant to increase the comfort of animals waiting to be slaughtered. Listen, as somebody who chooses to, like, not eat most meat products, like, it's, it's your choice, but it's completely hypocritical for you to care so much about how hen feels before it's killed. Also, I just, I can't, like, it's the most hilarious thing to me. Like, and I also think that there is hard evidence that's previous things that increased the chicken's movement and freedoms have led to an increase of disease outbreak and cannibalism. So, some of these things, or, you know, it's chicken cannibalism, not people. I think.
Oh, boy, it's happy already.
I just, I think that these are feel-good laws that make you feel better about eating animals, and that's ridiculous. Make your choice, stick with it. If you really care about animals, stop eating them.
Who wants to follow that? Christian?
You know, I, my no about and comment is not looking so silly now, is it?
What you got?
You know, I support this. I, I do believe in the humane farming practices. I'm curious I'm curious to hear Member Bower, or Mayor Bowers.
This isn't better farming practices, this is just new standards that aren't based on anything.
I'm sorry, I, again, I'm in support of this measure, I like the idea of chickens having more room. I agree with you that it's a feel-good measure, and you know what, sometimes I want to feel good as well.
About chickens.
One day I hope to do that. And chickens are vile creatures, they, they are total cannibals.
I agree, but you eat them.
Yeah, well.
Member Donahue?
Let's have no position on this, how about that?
Oh no, I'm waiting for this one, so.
Member Martinez?
I think we're going to end up with no position, so I support, but I don't think we have the numbers. I agree, this, sure, it's feel-good legislation, however, I think the more that we show that people back the idea of having more comfort and safety for animals, I think that's a move in the positive direction.
More safety for animals that are going to be eaten.
Yes.
They're so safe.
Okay, okay. We may be doing a motion on everything except 12, and then continue the debate? Is that okay?
It's just ridiculous debate, no, go for it, I want to hear yours.
I oppose, and I oppose because this harms family farmers, and it harms family farmers because of two reasons. One, it is prescribing the exact dimensions of floor space for animals of certain varieties, and while that is not necessarily or inherently a bad thing, although animal species cannibalism is a real thing, it is a real thing, the reality is that Proposition 2 from 10 years ago provided guidance, and people are kind of couching this measure as building on Proposition 2, but what they failed to understand is that the, while this is aimed at very large producers of certain animal products and byproducts, the reality is that for a family farmer, that under the definition, a business owner or operator means any person who owns or controls the operation of a business. And so, a family farmer that may not be able to meet these very specific criteria for floor space and other habitable spaces would essentially have to give up parts of its business or expend money on unanticipated capital investments that don't necessarily pencil out well for a family-based farmer. Second, the definition of a breeding pig is inappropriate in this measure. Breeding pig is defined as any pig that is capable of being bred, that is over the age of six months, and the reality is that essentially means any sow is a breeding pig, and they're required to have their own additional floor space and separate spaces, and having worked with pigs, that is, that is going to create a burden on any farmer that has pigs that could potentially breed. And so, that will, that will have an unintended impact, I think, as well. And then I think finally, one of the other things is that we shouldn't have these, these moving targets for livestock welfare. I think it is, California is way ahead of every other state on animal welfare and livestock well-being, with a couple exceptions. And what the goals of this measure are, are not bad goals, they're absolutely decent in a lot of respects, but the implementation of this will just have, have there be real challenges and an exodus of certain types of livestock and agricultural business in the state of California, and we don't think of it here, but agriculture is one of the single largest revenue-producing elements of the state of California, and so our long-term fiscal health in California depends on actually making it possible to do agriculture, and being from a family that has faced the challenges of doing agricultural work, I just don't think this is a, this is a, I'm going to say it, this is like a coastal liberal approach to rural farmland politics, and it is a real overreach in a space that well-intended people don't work in every day, I think. And so I oppose this measure. So I don't know if we got anyone convinced. Scott, did you get convinced by that?
I don't want to vote about it.
Okay, Diane, did you change your mind?
I, I feel like I'm trying to look up right now how, what the percentages of factory farms versus family-owned farms, and I'm getting conflicting information. So, I, at this point, I'm, no position.
Christian?
I'm trying to think what our impact here of taking a position on this is, and the number of votes.
It would be, it would, it would be a curious thing, people would ask about it. Why does a city with no hog houses, chicken coops, goat pens, or cow stables?
We might have some goat pens.
Well, they're illegal.
Shh, shh. We're not supposed to talk about goat pens.
Okay, do we have a, do we have a consensus, or can I, or should I, are we taking no position, or should I take a motion on the first ones, and we can vote on 12?
I think we have no position is the majority on this last one.
Are you okay with no position?
I'm fine with no position.
Okay, we will take no position on 12 after all that? So, Madam Clerk, the record I have right now, before I ask for a motion, is the council will support Prop 1, support Prop 2, support Prop 3, support Prop 4, oppose Prop 5, oppose Prop 6, support Prop 7 and Prop 8, support Prop 10, there is no Prop 9, has no position on propositions 11 and 12, and supports Alameda County Measure double F.
Yep.
With that, I will entertain a motion.
It's moved.
Take it.
A motion by Vice Mayor Medina, and a second by Member Donahue, to approve the positions just enumerated for the record. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?[1744.86]